Good evening, welcome. My name is Richard Wells and the Chair of the Milton Select Board. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 27, 2024, regular meeting of the Milton Select Board. We are here at the Council on Aging. And I would ask, I'm going to call the meeting in order and ask everyone to please stand. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So Ms. Bradley is a little under the weather tonight. I don't see her on there. If she is to join for any part of the meeting, we would go to a roll call vote. If not, we'll still vote in the present or in the A&amp;A. And if I see that change, or if she lets you know, we'll go. So, item number three, public comment. We allow 21. Is, do we have, I take, I see the sheet. Do we have people? Raise your hand, then I'll know. Anyone here for public comment? Okay. So for public comment, we will allow, we allow 21 minutes. Each speaker is allowed to speak for three minutes. Mr. Milano, oh, thank you. I got it. Mr., I'll call you. Mr. Milano will keep the 21 minute. The total allotted time, I'll keep the three minute time. I'll give each speaker a 30 second. When you're getting close to three minutes, I'll give you a 30 second warning to say, time to wrap it up. Let me just get to my stopwatch here, please. One second. And there we go. Okay. And I have one hand raised online, so hopefully I can get everyone. So I'm going to start with Mr. Joe Henning. If you'd please, when you take a seat, just state your name and your address. Thank you.
I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. It's been a couple of months since the MCAC rep for Milton resigned. And there are a number of important things coming up at the MCAC this, this coming year. The September meeting will be held next month. And I think that it will be a great idea for the Select Board to appoint a representative by that time. And I would like to be considered. I believe I'm the only person who documented their interest in the position. I believe my 11 years of involvement with airplane noise and pollution recommends me. I'm, I've attended a tremendous number of MCAC meetings over the years. I'm known by the people who populate the MCAC from other towns. I think particularly with issues like, I was in Lincoln last week and I noticed a lot of signs protesting the idea that Hanscom Field would be expanded for, its use would be expanded for private planes. And they protest against private planes, but the idea is they don't want them at Hanscom Field. So if they don't go to Hanscom Field, where are they going to go? They've complained to the governor about pollution, but we'll get the pollution if they don't. You can't stop the use of private planes. That's not going to happen. So I think in order to protect Milton from, you know, I'm sure they'll be victorious. And the way that other communities work, and I don't think that Milton has worked this way a lot, is in, in an alliance with our neighbors. And I think we need to be much more committed to common cause with Quincy, Braintree, Hingham. And I want to do that. I also want to take an opportunity to meet with city council members from Boston to push for a Dorchester rep. There isn't one now. Dorchester is tremendously affected by airplane noise and pollution. I think we need to create an alliance. I think we need to work with our neighbors. And I think we ought to try
30 seconds.
as hard as we can to push those private planes back to Hanscom, prevent the problem here. And there are a number of other issues that are important to us that we need to work on. And I'd like to be the representative to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kriech.
Thank you. I'm Cindy Christensen. I live at 59 Collmar Street. Like many town residents, I've wondered how it was determined that 26 additional classrooms are needed in our district by 2028 in order to keep average class sizes about where they were in 2018. With the help of others, we have written a report on the Assessment of School Classroom Needs 2024 that contains our research, calculations, requests, recommendations, and questions. There appears to be two critical problems with the number 26 additional classrooms. First, we cannot replicate the need for 26 classrooms using the very same data that the DRA architectural firm used in 2018 to arrive at that number. We question this possible misclassification. Also, when we use the most recent enrollment data that we could find, we determined a need of about zero to perhaps five or six additional classrooms across the district through school year 2033. So there appears to be two problems with the number 26. One problem is a possible mistake in the DRA study where this number was first reported. The second problem is that there has been no update to the classroom calculations using more recent data. The residents of Milton should not be asked to build $173 million new school based on this outdated and possibly incorrect number 26. Moving forward with the goal to build a new school before rectifying the inconsistencies that we found in the projected needs is financially irresponsible. We provided Select Board member Cohane with our report just a few hours ago. And when he has a chance to review it, we ask that it be distributed widely. All of our numbers have been fact checked and are referenced in the report. This does not mean that the report is without typos or other errors, but we have done our best with the limited time we have had. Given the recently requested additional expenditures and ballot timeline proposed by the School Building Committee, we think that getting our results out soon is best so that more eyes and minds can assess our results. We will appreciate everyone's careful review and criticism backed by additional, thank you, backed by additional references and numbers. We welcome an opportunity to continue to do our no cost to the town analyses on these issues. I will not be here for your response to public speak, but you all know how to find me. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to pronounce this correctly. So is it Ashish? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Select Board members. My name is Ashish Jaswal and I live in 34 Woodlot Drive in Milton. I'm here with some other residents from Milton Woods, as well as Indian Cliffs and Stoughton, Governor Stoughton Lane, to express a concern with the ongoing RFP process and the proposed plan for the Town Farm. In September 2023, you held a public hearing to get input from the Milton residents and the neighbors on this project, but that was after a decision had been made to send out an RFP for building 35 units in an affordable housing complex. The residents of Milton did not have an opportunity to provide input into that process. And we, and it seems that no other users or potential users of that land was considered. Today, we are requesting the trustees to revisit that decision. Our concerns are that you have not fully considered all potential uses of the Town Farm land for the poor of Milton. Please, let's think again if affordable housing is the best use under the trust document. It doesn't help the most needy residents of Milton, and it's not exclusively for the residents of Milton. Could there be better use of this land? We believe so. We request the Select Board members to consider other options as well, such as selling the land and using the proceeds to fund initiatives like the Milton Residents Fund. Here, the funds will impact a much larger community of Milton residents and in need for years to come. In October last year, Noreen Dolan requested additional funds from the town because she said she was, the fund was running out prior or before the end of the year because the need was so great. Another option with significant impact could be to build a full country. We believe there are many other uses for the Town Farm land that might better meet the requirements of the trust, that the land be used for the poor of Milton in perpetuity. So we request you, the trustees, and
30 seconds. Thank you, I'll keep going, 30 seconds.
trustees and fiduciaries of this land, that you take all this into account when forming a committee to advise you on the best use of Town Farm land. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ed Wood Kearns.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ed Kearns and my family and I live at 100 Governor Stoughton Lane. Last time I was in this room was about a year ago during the public comment for this proposed project for the Town Farm. And given the speed with which the RFP was then turned around, clearly had the appearance of perfunctory box checking, that none of the concerns raised by residents were ever going to be considered. So tonight, along with fellow neighbors, here to remind the board that those concerns still stand. Most notably, that if Governor Stoughton Lane is to be the main thoroughfare for access to these proposed new units, the street is not an acceptable option as it currently stands. The road is too narrow. Every time I exit my own street or turn onto my street, I hold my breath in hope that there is no one moving in the opposite direction because the pitch of the road as it meets Cantinav makes it very difficult to see any oncoming traffic, whether you are exiting the road or trying to turn onto the road. The width of the street, the lack of sidewalks, the fact that to widen the street would require movement of utility poles, widening the street may very well require taking land from abutters, including many rock walls that, given that this is Massachusetts, I assume that there's some historical component to. All of these concerns, which revolve around basic measures of safety for our families, are completely absent from this RFP process. And it certainly seems as if, in the interest of transparency, that that should be upfront when trying to solicit any bids for this property, that those bidding for that realize that in order for this to be viable, the road is going to need to be widened, which, as I mentioned, brings in many other issues. There needs to be a sidewalk. And the additional issues of flooding and water, which some of my neighbors spoke about last September, also seem to have been mostly ignored. So rather than moving forward with speed on this project, we would request that our concerns be addressed directly and transparently.
30 seconds.
And that, moving forward, the question of whether or not this is the best project for that property be formally addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gino Prusakoff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Gino Prusakoff. I live at 36 Woodlot Drive. It happens to be the lot that's immediately adjacent to the land in question that the previous two neighbors spoke about. I'm fairly new to the beautiful town of Milton. We've lived here for about three years. Not too new to this country. Lived about a third of my life in this country. But one of the primary reasons why we've decided to migrate to the United States is that unlike in the Soviet Union, where I was born and raised, people here have the right to be heard and participate in the decisions that impact, the consequences of which impact the communities in which they live. Now, I've listened to the points that were made by the previous two fellow neighbors to the points that were made in September, sort of post-decision, as it was mentioned. And it does seem to me that it makes sense to slow down a bit, take a step back and ask such questions as have all the possible options for the use of the land really been considered? To evaluate each one's pros, cons, to make sure you arrive at the most appropriate one? Is affordable housing really it? We do need affordable housing, but is this the place for it? Squeezing in 35 units into, you know, three serene neighborhoods of single-family homes? Have all the corresponding issues, flooding, safety, et cetera, been taken into account? Proper mitigation risks put in place, or at least thought of? And lastly, but equally importantly, why was neighbor involvement welcomed really only post-decision? I urge the Governor Stoughton Trust to reconsider the use of this land, to carefully weigh all of the available options and to arrive at the most optimal decision. And as you think of the committee to appoint, I urge you to carefully consider the charge of the committee so that its members could have the ability to consider other uses for the land, uses that have not been fully explored yet, uses that could be even more beneficial to the trust, to the poor of Milton, and to the residents of Milton.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Callahan.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Tom Callahan, 16 Orno Street, Precinct 4 Town Meeting Member and a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you for meeting later tonight as the Governor Stoughton Trustees and placing on the agenda an item to appoint a review committee for the proposals regarding Town Farm. Since six months has elapsed since two development teams submitted responses to the RFP for Town Farm, we thought it would be helpful to refresh residents on where we are in this process. On February 16, Affirmative Investments and the Milton Partnership for Community Reinvestment submitted responses to a request for proposals that the Governor Stoughton Trustees issued on December 6, 2023. Both proposals call for 35 homes on the site. Both development teams consist of highly respected firms in the region with deep experience in housing and affordable housing development. We are here today to figure out the future of the remaining three and a half acres of our historic poor farm. A piece of land with a rich history of serving our poor, but with a recent past that has been dominated by neglect and inaction over the past 20 years or more. We are faced with deteriorating structures and mounting liability for the town, an animal shelter poised to move soon to a beautiful new facility off of Randolph Ave, and an historic opportunity to use this land in perpetuity to house Milton's poor, just as the will demands and how this site has been used for much of its history since being deeded to the town in 1701. There is considerable townwide interest in what happens on our poor farm. As the Affordable Housing Trust's representative appointed to the committee, I look forward to working with those you appoint to review the RFP responses, interviewing the development teams, and discussing the future of the site that is such a big part of our history and of our future. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have one. Anyone else here present that didn't sign up? So I have one online attendee. You can, Miser, Ada Rosemarin. You can, whenever you can hear us, you can speak. You're unmuted. Or unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good evening. This is Ada Rosemarin, 32 Columbine Road. I was greatly disappointed that the Select Board voted to not put a new school on the November ballot. I see this as an opportunity lost for our town and our children. As students return to school tomorrow, this development will be deeply disappointing for families and Milton Public School staff who held out hope for a new school that was planned to open in 2027. The current funding for the School Building Committee is set to be fully expended in September, leaving this project on hold until such time when the town moves to continue the funding needed. We cannot let this happen. The School Building Committee needs a fall town meeting to approve additional funding to continue its progress toward the design of a new school and to respond to queries made by the Select Board that were beyond the schematic design budget. It surprises me that this did not happen to make it on the agenda for tonight. I know you have a long agenda, but I hope that it will be addressed at your next Select Board meeting as this is critical. The past several years have had fall town meetings in December. The warrants for these meetings have typically closed by late September, so time is of the essence. After watching recent School Building Committee meetings, Mr. Cohane, your representative from the Select Board on the School Building Committee, was tasked with items related to future scheduling of votes and ascertaining a list of design questions and concerns from the Select Board that the School Building Committee could address. So in closing, I urge the Select Board to move forward now with two things. Number one, scheduling a fall town meeting to continue the funding for the School Building Committee so they can plan for a solution to the decades-long overcrowding in our schools. And number two, enumerating a list of your questions and concerns about the school project so that School Building Committee can address them. Thank you all for your service and for keeping in mind the needs of our schoolchildren.
Thank you, Ada. That will conclude public comment. Thank you all. So I think what we're going to do, there are two issues. So one, we have a public hearing scheduled, which is item number four. And then if it's okay with the members, I think I'd like to advance and go right into the recess from the Select Board meeting, go into the Governor Stoughton meeting, deal with the Governor Stoughton agenda right after they come back in the Select Board meeting.
No objections.
You okay? Okay, okay. So, given that, we're going to move to item number four, which is a public hearing, which is a liquor license amendment, change of ownership interest. LLC members, LLC partners, trustees for Welch Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park. And so I'm going to declare the public meeting is open. Mrs. McGetrick, you'll be presenting. Mrs. McGetrick will be presenting from the applicant. Then I'll allow any questions, comments from board members, questions or comments from the public, ask for a motion to close the public hearing, and then a roll call vote. Actually, are we doing two of them or just one?
We should do them sequentially. So we'll do public hearing, then vote on the proposal.
All right, so we're going to do two public hearings, so don't go away. So for the record, on the change of ownership on item five, I'm going to abstain from the vote only because my college-age daughter Molly does work there in the summer, even though she's back at Syracuse now. And so, for the scope, I won't vote on the Abbey Park one, but she doesn't work in the house, so. So, given that, the hearing is open. Mrs. McGetrick, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'm Mary Ann McGetrick. I'm representing both entities for both of these public hearings. There is another attorney who filed the application who is much more experienced in corporate membership and all the details that go into this type of change of ownership. But I'm sort of the local contact and I've represented both restaurants in the past. So I'm just going to very briefly summarize what this, what this application is about. I won't talk long at all. Each, well, the first application is Welch Restaurant Management. They own Abbey Park Restaurant. And the application requests approval of a change of ownership for the ownership entity. And that consists of the removal of one member, Anthony Dorenzo, and leaving in place all the other members. One of the remaining members will be purchasing the 5% share that Anthony Dorenzo held. So if you read the application through, you'll get these details. I don't know that it's of any particular public interest, but that is what this application is about. ABCC requires that any entity owning a liquor license report through a public hearing process on any change in the ownership. And this is considered a change in ownership because we're removing one member. We're not adding any new members. We're leaving in place all the remaining members, but we are removing one. So that's what you were voting about. You'll be voting to allow us to make that change, to remove that member. Each license had the same ownership structure previously. After this change, each will still have the same ownership structure, but they'll have one less member. So I don't, I can speak again if you'd like on the second one, but it is exactly the same application with exactly the same names and exactly the same percentages. And so I would say, I'll leave it at that. That's what this is about. But if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer them from anyone.
So for the newer members, who I think are going through this for the first time, this is something that's happened. Whenever there's a change in partnership or ownership, we've gone through this with other restaurants. The law does require a public hearing to advise the public on our questions and comments for the change of ownership. This is a small percentage of the ownership, where, as Mrs. McGetrick said, one of the current owners is now buying the share that the owner, the previous one is vacating. There's no outside person coming in. But it could be, and legally, an outside person could, but in this case, there isn't. So questions or comments from Mrs. McGetrick? Anything at all? Public, anyone online? I see no one online. So, given that, I'll ask for a motion to close this public hearing on item number four.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Mrs. Musto. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. It's just voice, right?
It's a voice, yeah, it's a voice. I only heard you as I looked around. So, and I will abstain on that one.
Yeah, it's not on, right?
So, that's, that passes. I'm going, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, okay, now item number five.
Do you have to declare that it's open again?
Yeah, so I'm going to do it again. I'm going to go through the whole thing.
Now we're on to approving the change. And you should recuse yourself on item number five.
Oh, yeah, I recuse myself.
Oh, so this is just the vote, then?
Yep.
Okay, so now, the motion here is going to, tell me if I'm going wrong here, the move to approve.
So I'll move to approve the liquor license, change of ownership interest, minority share, Welch Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. Okay, now, I went, okay, now this is item six. So now I'm going to declare the public hearing is open. Mrs. McGetrick, you don't have to say anything further. Mrs. McGetrick, you don't have to say anything further. The, so I would look to have a move, a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, so the motion here would be to move to approve the liquor license change of ownership interest minority share 556 Adam Street, LLC, DBA Navara. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, Mrs. McGetrick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I think, do I want a motion to recess?
I think to cover yourself.
So I think I'd entertain a motion to recess from the regular Select Board meeting and enter into a meeting of the Governor Stoughton Trust. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, so recessed from the Select Board meeting, we're now in the Governor Stoughton meeting. How do you remember these days, Mr. Sweeney? Okay, so let me get to this now. Okay. So, I'm gonna call the Governor Stoughton meeting to order. Item two is discussion of the Town Farm Review Committee charge. I wanna jump to my, hold on to this here. I just wanna get this quickly. Here we go. So discussion update approval, Town Farm Review Committee charge. Comments are from the members. No one?
I will.
Miss Musto, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, please.
Then this is all go to you afterwards, okay?
Sure. So, we had a lot of people that came here tonight, that neighbors with concerns about the current charge that was made previously, that we didn't, that we sent out RFPs before we heard from the residents and the neighbors. And given that this is, I'll write down here, the land is considered the 11th most endangered site, according to the Mass Historical Commission. I think it's important that we really consider what goes there, the buildings and the land, and I think that we should be open-minded to all options. So I think that should be, the charge should be expanded.
This is all.
Thanks. Just a couple of quick points. So, first of all, thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. I appreciate always hearing from people. I know we all do. So it's not true that we sent the RFP out before hearing from neighbors, as was stated pretty clearly, the RFP was put out in December 6th. We were listening to the neighbors in September, and the neighbors did influence very strongly, actually, the RFP process. We put in concerns from the neighbors around traffic into the RFP. We put in concerns around flooding into the RFP. We put in concerns about maintaining historical buildings on the site, which were, again, raised by the neighbors, put into the RFP. We put in comments around, or requirements around, construction noise and traffic abatement. And we also put in comments around sidewalks and pathways, which is great, because I live in a house that doesn't have a sidewalk on my street. So I feel great that we, you know, were able to do that. So it's not really true, and, you know, again, I'm not trying to malign anybody or say anything's wrong, or argue, just saying we had a long process about this. We talked to the Attorney General. The Attorney General agreed that this was a proper use of the land. We've already sold off most of the town farmland. We had a number of really interesting substantive conversations about the historic poor farm. The will, for example, that left the poor farm to Milton was, you know, was enacted in 1701. Also included in the will was a human being, a slave, was given away as part of the will, not to the town of Milton, fortunately. But this is, that sort of gives you an idea of the historical nature, and how long ago, and how definitions have changed. If you asked to define property in 1701, property would have included human beings, for example. So we've had a long series of discussions on this. The RFP was put out in December. We received responses in March. This group has not met again, despite, you know, multiple requests for us to convene. So now we're finally at this point, and once again, folks are asking us to pause, rewind, go back, and reconsider things. And I'm always curious about which, when we listen to, if we have four people that show up and ask for one thing, we have to pay attention. If we have 50 parents show up and ask for something, we have to not pay attention. So it's always a bit of a balancing act here on the Select Board. But I will say that I think it's been, it's very clear that the town needs affordable housing. Everyone agrees on that. It's very clear that affordable housing benefits folks that have lower-than-average median incomes, which I think you could use that to define poor. I think if you defined poor person in 1701, it would definitely be somebody that didn't own any property in Milton, so we wouldn't probably consider them a resident for those purposes either. So we've had this process. It's gone on for a year and a half. We've listened to the neighbors. We made some substantive changes to the RFP. The, you know, the town doing business as the town had put this out in good faith. We had two great applications come in. And then, as everyone knows, as we've been told multiple times during the School Building Committee debate, construction costs go up the longer that we wait. So we're costing time. Not only are we costing time, but whenever people complain about 40Bs being put in their neighborhood, the reason that they're being put there is because the town refuses to build its own affordable housing. And whenever we do that, it's because we're told that this isn't the right place, this isn't the right time, this isn't the right neighborhood. And that is something that has been said multiple times. Fortunately for us, we know that this is the right time, because we have an RFP that's been made, and we've got folks that have responded to it. We know that this is the right place, because this land is literally used for the benefit of the poor. And we know that the longer that we wait on this, the more the construction costs will go up, and also the less likely, and this is something I really have to emphasize, businesses are gonna wanna do business with this town. If we can't put an offer out there, and then, in good faith, proceed on that offer, why would any, any sort of company want to do business with this town if they know that at any given moment, someone could say, well, is this the right time? Let's delay, let's take more time to consider this? So, all of that said, we don't have here as, you know, this is not about appointing a committee to review the use of the land. That is up to the Governor Stoughton Trust how that land is used. We don't form an outside committee. We've already decided that we're using this land for affordable housing. I know that seats have changed, and maybe people don't feel the same way that people that used to sit here, but we still have to do business as the town. And to not do that is really to not act in good faith, and it's going to damage our town in the long term. And it will continue to subject more residents to hostile 40Bs being put in neighborhoods where they also may not feel like it belongs, with no input from the residents, with no input from the community, with no recourse at all. So in this case, we have the option of getting more community input, which we've already received, and we can receive more. We have the land, it's the right time, we have the RFPs. Let's stop delaying, let's stop denying, and let's just move forward and do some business as the town. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Mr. Cohen?
After all that, I agree with Roxy, and I'd like to look at expanding the charge.
Is expanding the charge under?
It is, so, okay, so is it, you?
I just wanted to add one thing, that as Governor Stoughton trustees, we have a responsibility to oversee this land and what goes there. And we have a responsibility to do that in the right manner. And so if that means that we relook at this, then I think that is the right thing to do. Doesn't mean that we have to narrow our path so narrow, as another member here suggesting. I think we have a responsibility to do what's right for that land as trustees, and to do right for the poor of Milton. Thank you.
Can I talk now?
Yes.
Sure? Okay. So, clearly, I've been invested in this in a very long time. I was one of the original, part of a group, was one of the original bidders that bid against Pulte. It was our goal then, as, we are a nonprofit, and most people know who it is, but as a nonprofit, we bid our initial bid back in 2009, I think, 2008? It's long before I ever thought of coming in this room, was to try and preserve the 34 acres and rebuild the existing structures, the Arms House, the Men's Arms House, and the Pest House, as affordable units, and to actually build a, not just a new animal shelter there, but also to build a new structure that would have been a permanent location for the Milton Food Pantry. That was rejected on a three-to-one vote, I think, a two-to-one vote, and here's where we are. But I've always felt, and I remember having a discussion, not for the numbers, but I remember being here, as the Pulte project was progressing and a neighborhood was developing, I remember us having a discussion, I remember Mrs. Collins especially saying, there's going to be a neighborhood one day here, and they, much like the other bidders, Quisicbrook and Indian Cliffs, are going to, and the Governor Stoughton residents are gonna have some type of say in this. So to the first point, I did have a conversation as chair with the Attorney General, and Ms. Musto was on it as well. And one of the things that I want to be very clear about is the Attorney General has not approved anything. He's not said this is a proper thing. He's not, she, well, the gentleman is Assistant Attorney General, John Green, is a gentleman. He's not said, and I don't wanna summarize everything, but he, two things that, to me, were very clear, he hasn't approved anything. And number two is that nobody, any bid, any request to include us, the Governor Stoughton trustees, to touch any of the $5 million, and the principal of that money will be approved by them. Am I summing that up correctly? We can only work off the interest, which is, senior members of this board know, and we've pretty much spent just about every nickel each year giving to what they describe as what they find to be appropriate needs of the poor, the needs of the will, which are primarily from us, the Milton Residents Fund, and the Milton Food Pantry. A lot of people don't know where those are, they don't understand them. I talk about this a lot, my private life, for those who wanna criticize me, come with me any day, and I will clearly take you to places where you're going to see what poverty really is. And there is poverty in this community. You can ride around in a car all day long, you're not gonna see it, but it's here. There's a reason why we have a Milton Food Pantry. So, I understand that there were two proposals here. I did talk to the Affordable Housing Chair, Julie Cramer, and I know how passionate she is, and I know how much she cares about this, and I have been here for the approval of nearly 700 units of affordable housing since I was on this board, so I can understand the process, what it takes. Some were good and some weren't so good, but we're in the position we're in. For me personally, I'm fine with allowing the committee that we're about to appoint to, as we had intended, to review these two proposals. But I'm also fine with allowing them to report back to us on other best practices that they think are better than those. Because, I'll be honest, I haven't, I haven't, I wanna say dove, looked deeply, I've spent a long day, I haven't looked very deeply into these two proposals, because I knew this was going to come. And this is a significant change, and there is definitely a historic, I do like, one thing, I did like the fact that both proposals, both developers did propose maintaining the existing structures. That's something I know Steve O'Donnell's cared a great deal about, and I know that for the nonprofit that I sit on, that was something that we cared about, and, you know, history, once you tear things down, there's no getting them back. So I'm fine, my suggestion would be to appoint this committee, ask them to evaluate the two RFPs, and allow them, if they do not find that these RFPs meet either the needs, and this will be our decision, but to at least report back to us on any other alternatives, or any other suggestions that they think are better, that meet the needs of the will, I'm fine with expanding that charge. And I'm, this may be something that maybe we wanna let Peter put a couple words to. I'm just expressing a broader view, I'm not a lawyer. And it may be that everyone decides these are, but I'm forgiving these abutters a voice, because this is a historic aspect of the town. To the one point that the gentleman made, as the former chair of the Traffic Commission for 10 years, and having been to that animal shelter on more times than I can count, pulling out a Governor Stoughton lane on a Camden Avenue is a significant, significant cause for caution, if I were to use the term. I don't wanna scare anyone. So that would be where I'm at, and I will make a motion that we...
Before we move, can I?
Okay, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. So just a quick question, and then a quick thought, and then whatever your motion is. So the question I have, Mr. Wells, is when did you and Ms. Musto talk with the Attorney General, the Assistant Attorney General?
Last week.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
It was only because we waited for them. We waited till they would talk to us.
I, you know, I think it's great that you spoke with them. I think having a meeting of the trustees in advance of that, so that we could maybe have put some, you know, thoughtful questions together for you guys to have.
That didn't happen the last time, when the prior chair met with it. I had no input in that, so.
I think it was Mr. Milano that met with them. But that's fine, that's just a quick question. Second point is, I don't think anybody here is advocating not having abutters on this committee, so that's, you know, totally fine, obviously. My suggestion would be, because the lack of affordable housing currently impacts folks everywhere, from East Milton to West Milton, which is a place, to North and South Milton. So I would recommend that we think about, and I know that we had applications from Danya Raphael, who is a former member of the Affordable Housing Trust, and a woman of color, who would be the only person of color on this panel, as it's currently proposed, that we could consider her and/or Carolyn Cahill, who also wrote to the town administrator expressing interest in participating in the process, and is, of course, involved in the Chamber of Commerce and the real estate market. So given that both of them have significant expertise in the field, I think it would behoove us as a town, so that if we're giving residents a voice, we're not just giving residents a butt, of course, we are giving them a voice, but that we're also considering folks who, A, understand the broader impact of not building affordable housing in town, and B, understand the RFP process, and might be able to provide some great advice or guidance or questions to the process. I think it would behoove us as a town to make sure that we're being truly representative, including people of color on boards or committees that we point, particularly when, well, in any circumstance. So those would be my, that would be my suggestion, as we think about the makeup of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. So I did see those texts to Mr. Milano, and I saw the suggestion where they came from, and I'm fine with that. That's, everyone's right, and I appreciate that. But to me, as I've said all along, my concern in this situation is that I wanted to see a committee, me personally, I wanted to see a committee of the neighborhoods that are about this, to allow them to weigh in on this. This is going to have a direct impact on them. This is a historical change. I've never wavered on this since the day they first, I first reviewed, the first RFP that came out in 2009. I've thought about this repeatedly, and, well, I appreciate your comments on it, but just, to me, this is about the neighborhood, and that's right. I think there's more than enough expertise and diversity in that neighborhood to meet the issues that you just brought up, so. So given that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Town Farm Review Committee charge that will include the review of the two RFPs set forth, I think, by the two responders to the RFP, and to also include that if, in fact, that there is an alternative proposal that they want to come forward with, that they may also do that, and review any other alternatives, that meet the needs, what we believe is the needs of the trust. And Attorney Miller can put that in language, so do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Musto. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Three in affirmative, one in aye, and the motion passes. Okay, so now let's go to the discussion approval of the appointees, the appointment of the Town Farm Review Committee members. From the Governor Stoughton Trust, one trustee, and I understand Ms. Musto has suggested to Mr. Milan that she's interested.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm assuming, is this open for discussion?
I'm just reading them.
Okay. So for the Governor Stoughton Trust, I know when we had this conversation in March, we had decided that because MP has represented, and Affordable Housing Trust has represented, and both Ms. Musto and I sit on that, that neither one of us would put our names forward. If that's changed, then...
That has changed.
That's something that hasn't been discussed among this group in an open meeting.
We can do that. I'm just, I just suggested.
Okay. No, that's what, I'm just putting that out there, that you seem to be aware of a change that I'm not aware of.
On the chair, I had an agenda prep meeting with Mr. Milano, like, just, from the Affordable Housing Trust, Mr. Callahan, from the Planning Board, Meredith Hall, from the Historic Commission's Chair, Steve O'Donnell, from the Mass Planning and Implementation Committee, Cheryl Taglias, and the residents that represent the neighborhoods. I have a list of Michael Kelly, Richard Williams, Susan Ferrari, Manche... have a list of Michael Kelly, Richard Williams, Susan Ferrari, Mary Blanchett, Morgan Salmon, and Maggie Wilson.
Mr. Chair, on, in terms of Quissetbrook, Quissetbrook had several people put their names forward.
So I knew that.
And I spoke to Mr. Williams, who's the current president of the corporation, and he suggested himself as the direction from Quissetbrook as the neighborhood, so we had listed the names, because those are the names, and it hadn't been given one, but I did follow up with him today.
Mr. Milano?
Yes.
I know that folks were asked to submit a written application to register their interest in this committee, did that happen for all of these folks?
What had happened is, we reached out to folks in the neighborhoods, in each of the neighborhoods, and asked them to send us names of people who would be interested. It wasn't, we didn't request them to fill out any specific application.
Okay, so, because I was told, if we were having folks that were interested, that they needed to put a letter forward to you, expressing their interest and why they wanted to participate in the committee.
I have, everybody has done so.
Okay.
On this, that has been listed here.
Do we have those materials to review for these residents?
I can share, they're mostly just emails that said I would be interested in serving.
Oh, I'm just wondering, because it sounds like we've already made up our minds about who we're appointing, so it's nice for transparency's sake to have on record who's said what about whether they'd like to join and what they're interested in.
You finished?
I, was a question for Mr. Milano and Mr. Wells.
So I want to respond.
Okay.
The neighborhoods had many, all the neighborhoods wanted to put more than one resident, and so what I suggested to Mr. Milano was, out of fairness, to represent everyone, one representative from each location, so one representative from Quissetbrook, who wanted three, one representative from the residents of Woodlot Tribe, one representative from the residents of Governor Stoughton, and one representative from the largest neighborhood, which is the neighborhood of Indian Springs. So. If you want to change that, but I'm fine with that, I wasn't sure, I knew that Quissetbrook especially wanted more than one, and Mr. Milano handed it, and to me, he just addressed it.
Can I?
Sure.
Thank you, okay. So the last point then on the residents is that, you know, I know of the residents that are listed here, only Ms. Blanchett has really reached out to the Affordable Housing Trust to engage in the process, so to the extent that I can, as the representative from the Affordable Housing Trust of the Select Board, I would recommend that Mary Blanchett be appointed as one of the residents, she is also, I think, along with one of the gentlemen in the audience, immediately adjacent to the, to the property.
So you want to give Quissetbrook two residents?
I think that it would actually make more sense to give Quissetbrook two, and Indian Cliffs is a huge neighborhood, I mean, I don't know where you draw the line of where the abutting starts, but I think Quissetbrook and Woodlot are, are the, those would be the neighborhoods that I would, I would do two from Quisset, and I would do. That's my, that's my thinking, otherwise.
I want to be fair, like, you know, everyone know I'm all about fairness, I'm trying to be fair and give every single entity a voice here that has concern in this, I mean, we could have done three, I'm just trying to, and the other thing is, I'm trying to move this along, one of the things that we do have is we have, in your words, we have two developers that have put two RFPs forward and are waiting to hear, so win, lose, or draw, I think they deserve to have their, the merits of their proposals reviewed.
I totally agree.
So unless anyone objects, I'd recommend that we go forward with the names that I've put forward, with the exception of that I will recommend that Ms. Musto serve as the, I'll make a motion that Ms. Musto serve as the representative of the Governor Stoughton Trust.
I second that motion.
I just, for the record, I would like to point out that Ms. Bradley and Mr. Wells were both nominated for the representatives in March, and Ms. Musto and I recused ourselves.
That's fine, so noted, so.
I just was going to add that I don't recall that I, it was not a vote.
Yeah, it wasn't, I went back.
There was no formal vote.
We didn't vote, we talked.
We never voted.
Yes, I know there wasn't a formal vote, but it was very clear in the discussion that you and I were not going to participate in it, and it was Ms. Bradley and Mr. Wells, because you serve on MPIC, I serve on Affordable Housing Trust, people can watch the tape and make their own decisions.
But there was not, I was not part of that decision, thank you.
Okay, let's get some stuff done here.
For clarification, Mr. Wells, the residents, do you have the residents, which of the residents from the list that you're reading are the ones that you're proposing, because there's.
Michael Kelly, Richard Williams, Morgan Salmon, and Maggie Wilson, did I get that right? That covers all four neighborhoods.
Okay. So, and I would like to make a motion that we include one resident.
I made a motion.
I second that.
I've got a motion on the floor, so.
But I, can I make a friendly amendment to your motion, or amendment to your motion?
What's the amendment?
I move that we appoint one resident at large from Milton with knowledge of the affordable housing process to serve as an additional resident voice.
Is there a second on that? You don't have a second, Mr., I don't see a second, I would not see.
I clarify, I don't have a second.
I know, I know what you're trying to do, but I want to move this forward.
I'm all for moving forward, Mr. Chair.
So, there's, is there a second on the friendly amendment? There is not, so the friendly amendment is defeated, so now the motion on the floor is to appoint the four residents, Michael Kelly, Richard Williams, Morgan Salmon, and Maggie Wilson, as residents to the Town Farm Review Committee charge.
That's second?
It's already been second, all those, all those in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, because I haven't seen any paperwork on any of the residents.
That's fine. Thank you all, so now.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
We appoint everybody else and officially they take a vote.
I think we do.
Okay, so now I'm going to go through, I'm going to make a motion to approve, from the Governor Stoughton Trust, Roxanne Musto, from the Affordable Housing Trust, Tom Callahan, from the Planning Board.
Not to me.
Let me just finish, from the Planning Board, Mr. Meredith Hall, from the Historical Commission, Steve O'Donnell, and from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, Charlotte Taggias, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chair. Please.
Go ahead.
The Affordable Housing Trust Planning Board, Historical Commission, Master Plan Implementation Committee, all voted on their appointees, I think what's, what we should do is vote on our appointee, and then vote for the rest as a slate.
We're going to vote as a slate, they have to.
If we do that, then I have to vote no.
Okay, that's fine, all those in favor? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Yes, no, I'm a no.
So you're a no on the appointees of the other appointees, okay, very good, okay.
I'm specifically no on our Governor Stoughton Trust team.
Okay. Now.
I'll make a motion to close unless we have another item to do.
So I want to move to adjourn, you going to move to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn the Governor Stoughton Trust.
I'll second.
Seconding, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all, thank you for your time, sorry for the. Static, and good luck. You'll all have to get sworn in, before you can have a meeting, before anyone can vote, you'll get a letter from Mr. Milano, each member, regardless of what position they're in now, must go to the Town Clerk's office and get sworn in first, before you can actually have a meeting and vote, but thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, so now I'm going to move, make a motion to return to regular session, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're back in.
Sorry.
I got, I got that back, thanks, thank you. So now we're at item.
We're going to go to item.
Eight?
We're going to hold on the bond sale, we're going to go to item nine.
Still talking to kids.
Okay, so, item nine is discussion update, East Milton Fire Station, our Fire Station Running Committee Chair, Mr. Walsh, you bringing Mr. Salmon to, or just, you're good on this? Good evening, welcome, thank you for your patience, thank you for your time, congratulations on headquarters, and thank you for, on behalf of us, this board and the prior boards that I've sat here with over these past many years, for all the efforts that your committee has taken and put forth to get us to where we are, this is, as you know, we've spent a lot of hours together, you and I, and you're, this has taken an awful lot of work, this is a unique situation, and everything from the design, the development, and especially the funding, trying to get funding to match, so that we're able to develop and build these head, these facilities without going outside what has been allotted to us under the early amendments, so that's my two seconds for you tonight, and the rest is to you, welcome, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you, members of the board, having spent a long time active resident and town E member, I think, 35 years, I know it takes a lot of work, and a lot of times it's thankless, you know, you're trying to make great decisions, and you're working hard, and the effort is appreciated, and not just by someone else who's been involved in other boards or committees, but I think by many, many residents, so thank you. And Mr. Chair, I'm not sure, I didn't know if you, I understood you might be discussing the fate of the current East Milton station, if you want just a brief little update as to where we are.
Yeah, that would start, and then we can go from there on timing and what you, what you.
All right, terrific, thank you, so first of all, in regards to the brand new headquarters station, I'd like to use this opportunity to share with you and the community, we did attempt, as we were finished opening the section where, you know, it could start being used, we attempted to have a community day, we opened it up to everybody on a Saturday, but it wasn't well advertised and well structured, so we agreed as a committee that we would in fact have a public viewing day, and sort of formal opening of the station, we are in, as Mr. Milano knows, we're right about technically being finished.
I know, I was there today.
And so, and we are meeting as a committee, Fire Station Building Committee on September 3rd, not that it's not a busy day in the town, you know, full election going on. But we're meeting then because we're trying our best to get the East Milton station going forward, so I'll make sure that we have an agenda item where we discuss, and hopefully establish a grand opening day, if you will, from the headquarters, ironically, it's behind the Town Hall, and it doesn't get seen by a lot of residents, you know, riding by, and it's, I think it's unfortunate, because I think it looks spectacular, but I'm definitely biased, but so I think it'll be great to do that. And then secondly, as I just referred to, we're real close at being able to determine what we're going to do in potentially issuing the RFPs for the East Milton station, which will be located on property directly next to the St. Agathus Rectory, so if you're on Adam Street, you look just directly to the left of the St. Agathus Rectory, that's, that'll be there. We have, it's delineated a little bit by, we have already put in a new exit driveway, if you will, on the property, we were asked as part of the purchase and sales agreement to do that during July and August, so it would not interfere, build that exit driveway, so it would not interfere with the kids in school, we did do that last summer, we're hoping to be well underway in construction during the school year, and, Mr. Chair, if you're comfortable, I'd be happy to come in at a future date, when we have sort of tangible dates as to what and when we're going to do East Milton, I'd love to share that with the committee and the community.
So for the members, this is, I was trying to think historically today, I believe, I can't think of one. I think there's going to be the first newly constructed building since this building here, am I right? Since this, because the schools were all within existing structures. Headquarters, well, I guess you could, headquarters is, in a way, it's a, it's brand new, but it's like an offshoot of a historic structure.
This is a new site.
This is going to be a new site with a brand new building, I think, like this, I think it may be the first one since the CLA was built.
That's a good point.
So for the board members, there are some options we are going to, just, I'm only saying this to think about it tonight. We're going to have to look, and you can tell me if I go off course here, we will have to look to dispose of, of rent, or lease, or whatever, the existing engine two. I think that's a discussion we need to have sooner versus later, and it might be viable to have you or the, I don't know who it is, to come in and kind of paint the picture to the decaying condition, you know, just the condition, why it's no longer viable as a fire station, or what it is that we would be leasing, renting, selling.
I'd be happy to do that tonight, if you'd like, and it won't, I won't take up much of your time.
Go ahead, you can kind of, because I don't think a lot of the members know.
Yeah, so, so ironically, we had, you know, going, when this project started, we had three fire stations in Milton, and when this project is done, we'll still have three fire stations, two of them were well more than 100 years old, including the headquarters, in fact, they were some of the oldest fire stations in the country. The newest one is actually Engine Two station in East Milton Square, the one we're about to replace, the irony, the irony of that being the newest one, is it, it was being constructed and wrapped up in the, in the early 1950s, about 1951, and then come along later in the 1950s, the state and the federal government decided to sink the expressway, and dramatically changed the whole traffic flow down in East Milton, it really, it, you know, it put a canyon between, you know, 75% of the town, if you will, and the section across Quincy. I strongly believe, and just to, I like to reiterate this anytime we get on this subject, because I think it's important, I strongly believe had that expressway been sunk before the decision was made by the town to rebuild, by the way, there was another station there, but to rebuild on that site, they would not have, and the reason is, 75% of the district that that fire station covers is on, let's call it, the Milton side of the expressway, and it takes a minimum of a minute, but more like a minute and a half, for those engines to leave East Milton Station and get over to the post office, at my, I like to use this expression, even at my advanced age, I could probably throw a rock from East Milton Fire Station and hit the post office, but don't test me on that.
Tomorrow, 10 o'clock, we'll meet you on the deck. You get three warmups.
I can see it now, assaulting a federal building.
I'm not going there.
Anyway, and just a little aside, so you know. The current locate, the new location is a dramatic improvement, and even in response time, for both the 25% of the district that's on the Quincy side, and significantly for the 75% of the district, because on the Milton side, they'll come out on the bright, wide roadway, i.e. Adam Street, that has clear visibility sightlines on both sides, get out, and they can quickly feed to 75% of the district on this side, and then if they have to service the residents on the Quincy side of the expressway, they're able to come out, take a right, take a right again on West Gwannam Street, and frankly, that's a wider and easier road to then go up and feed off the side streets to get to those residents, I'm sure I don't have to tell you that Adam Street, yeah, Adam Street in East Milton is very crowded, you know, people are double parking, it's tight, there's a lot of businesses there, so the parking is usually taken up, so for the, the engines to come out and then get up Adam Street quickly to service some of those can be slow. Most people that we've talked to, at the analysis that we've had done, said it will be faster using West Gwannam Street. Okay, so that's a, I'm sorry.
So are we still talking to construct Engine Two like a nine to 10 month project?
I, yeah, I would say that's a fairly, a good estimate, you know, a whole year, probably when you put it out to bid.
Right.
Get through that, we did, we did do, went through a whole pre-qualification process, basically to, it's an early awareness to potential bidders of what's going to be involved, they have to formally go through review and submit their interest, it would have been reasonable to expect as few as three acceptable responses to that, informal responses to that, we got 12. And that's terrific, because I think when we go out to bid, it's going to help, it's sort of an indicator that there's a real appetite out in the, in the construction world for more projects, and that should help us with our pricing, but yes, so, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, we're sitting here, it's basically around September, my hope and goal would be that we will be all done and occupied before next September.
So I definitely won't be chair next September, what I'd like to do though, in my time that I am chair this year, is to try and at least start to put on our radar, that we start to look at how we're going to dispose of this, whether it's a sale, whether it's a lease, and if, whatever it is, if we do issue an RFP or something before, that whoever the buyer or the other leasing is, that they allow us to be the tenant until the move time.
And so, if, if, if you, if you like.
Go ahead.
I have strong opinions regarding that.
Kidding me?
No, I honestly look.
No, no, that's why I wanted you to come here.
So starting with, and Mr. Wells sort of referenced it, the current station, even though the newest station, we actually had, it had a in-service engine, and then it was also storing an old ladder truck in there. By the way, originally when it was serviced, you know, the fire department had a ladder truck.
When we were St. Agathus kids, there was both a ladder, it was Engine Two and Ladder Two in that firehouse.
There you go. And so. And so we had to actually take the second truck out of that building because as, you know, we were working on this project, all of a sudden, we became aware of the fact that the floor, the lintel edge of where the door is, if you will, that the trucks were sinking. It could have, if we continued to use it and did nothing, could have collapsed. So we did do an emergency repair. We worked with the town, our town DPW, still represented here by one terrific DPW leader, I might add. They, you know, they worked with us and we did do an emergency repair. We no longer keep a second truck in there and never will. And we're hoping and expecting to get through the time that we needed for the active truck before we'd have to worry about other repairs. But in my opinion, just as, I'll start with as a resident town meeting member. I don't think that that bill, I think it's going to need major repair if you want to retain it and use it for something else for the town in the future. I think it would be an expensive undertaking. And again, it's going to have issues that the fire department faces, like ridiculous traffic jams in the area and others. So I, as a resident, in one time, I would like to see the town sell it rather than sink a bunch of money into it and try to find a purpose that may not work well. On the other hand, the private sector, ironically, still does have interest in that location. In fact, you know, there've been times in the past, banks have expressed interest to the select boards about, hey, would you, you know, consider getting rid of that property? We're interested. We had Webb Collins on our committee, a senior member of largest real estate company in the world. He'd had them do an evaluation, and this is about two years old now. And they maintained that building would be worth the town getting rid of a million dollars and probably more depending. So and even though it's tough to be repaired and fixed for us, it has enough value to the private sector because of its location that it would bring in revenue. And now, in complete open honesty, I would love to see the town sell it, period. But I especially would like to see the town sell it because we may find ourselves in need of some of those funds to squeeze in and get the East Milton Fire Station completed within the limits of the special purpose stabilization fund, i.e. as in Milton, known as the Hurley Amendment. We're not raising any residence taxes. It's using the declining debt from the school building project in the Milton Library to fund the construction of the fire stations. We know, it's no surprise, that we're going to have to come back to the town for more funds. There's more available to us with that special purpose stabilization funds. But before we take on the last project, which will be Atherton. So I digressed a little.
No, I, I'm glad you said that because I knew this was coming, so I'm glad you brought that up. So not that we're going to do anything on it tonight, but we knew, we knew that was coming, so.
Yeah, and so, you know, if you had any questions, I'd be happy. I'm lobbying to sell that station. I may be lobbying stronger if we find we're all set to go and we're shot a little. And by the way, just an observation, like everything in life, when you get involved with something, you learn a lot more about it than you would have known otherwise. There are towns that have done similar things like us. You can sell that and we can still use it until it's completed. So there's all kinds of arrangements you could make. I'm floating that idea.
I was, that's why I said that, that we become the tenant if we were to sell it and then we remain a tenant until we're ready to move into the new Engine Two. So perhaps, maybe at the next meeting, you could bring forth this week just to kind of paint a picture as to how we should move forward on this, if this is what we're going to do.
Yes, I think, you know, putting an RFP together is light lifting in the sense of putting the pieces together. The hard parts of it are kind of, what does the board want to evaluate in terms of, does it care just about purchase price? Does the board care about selling, but it also, hey, we like the building and we want the new tenant to keep the building as is? Do we want to lease it and hold on to the land? Those are the kind of things that shape how we would write an RFP and especially how we would shape the evaluation criteria. So for the next meeting, I can give an example and ahead of time, some examples of what RFPs might look like. But really, the fundamental question are, do we want to keep it, get highest price and have no restrictions on what happens to the building after the facts? Do we want to say there's preferences for keeping the building? Do we want to only lease it? So those kind of big fundamental questions, we would need real clarity on before being able to progress an RFP very far. And maybe it's something we're thinking about and having that discussion at the next meeting and then letting us go to work on writing and putting that criteria together.
I'm fine with that. The one, I know, I know where Chair Walsh is at on selling it because I think if we keep it, we're going to have to put, if we were to, I mean, you're talking serious money to what we would do with it. But I do, and I'm sure Steve O'Donnell were here or Meredith or people who really care about the history, that there will be some care to keep. I mean, to me, I look at the old headquarters now, it's like amazing. It's just, and so I think you could do something very similar with ease, you know, while keeping that. And so I, I'm open, at least me, I'm open to whatever you want to go. Other members may think differently, whatever you want to. No, no comments? Go ahead, I'm looking at you.
I know you're looking at me.
I can tell you want to say something like, go ahead. Sorry, my bad.
I would, no, you're fine. I think it's good to keep the options open. I mean, there's a place in Boston, I think it's Division 16, it was an old firehouse and a restaurant. So I mean, I think there are creative things could happen. And I wonder if, you know, somebody would, if we retained the property, would somebody come in and do a build out, you know, and that's an option too. So I think we just, I would just like us to keep our options open, whether it's, you know, instead of selling it, you know, maybe that is what we do, but let's look at also, would somebody be interested in doing a build out of that? And, you know, leasing it from the town or something. So I think sometimes.
Build it, make it bigger?
No, no, no. Sometimes you'll have somebody that will go in and they'll demo it and then they'll, that will be like their space. So I think just to keep the options open would be good.
Yeah, if I can.
Go ahead, Mr. Wells.
I agree with Ms. Musto. Particularly when we look at the, when there was looking at the DCR property over by the Matapan Rotary, can't remember the number of the properties.
Seven Brushell Road.
There, one of the options was, you know, to like, for a tenant to receive a discounted lease in exchange for like renovating or repairing a building. And so, you know, I agree, I think keeping our options open right now is a good idea. And I think, you know, the possibility of perhaps leasing it and then providing like a subsidized lease so that they repair the building, that town maintains property, but we don't lose money on it, I think that could make sense.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, Paul, just one thing, since we looked at extensively, one thing I'd also just bring to your attention, it doesn't influence it one way or the other, but the real problem with that location is parking.
Yes.
The lot is so tiny, even if we didn't have a problem with the floor collapsing and the traffic, and those are real problems. Building a firehouse to accommodate the, engines now are getting bigger, et cetera. It just wasn't there. We only, they only have three firefighters that can park their car. They squeeze it in there.
One, one goes sideways against the building, the other two back in against it.
That's right.
Yeah, it's a tough spot.
But, but you know, residents have recommended to me, knowing I'm on the Fire Station Building Committee, that it would be a great spot for a firehouse subs. I'm just saying.
So I'm fine with bringing to us any, but I do know, I mean, I've sat through all these meetings. I mean, from the point of trying to look at it to keep it as a firehouse to Mr. Collins' built, you know, in detailed presentations about, and then listening to Bill Ritchie before, you know, the prior consultant about the level of work. And I just think that we need to, because the last thing I want to see happen is, build Engine Two, they move out in two years from now, what time, what are we going to do with that building? I don't think that's, that's not going to serve. And which is why, being involved in your committee, I said to Mr. Milano, we need to start talking about this and looking at this now versus a year from now when you're gone and it's sitting there all boarded up and people are going to say, and it's unlike the MAC or even Seven Brushell, or even Seven Brushell Road on a slab, it doesn't have that. But it's unlike the MAC or the Discovery School, which were, that were functional, that you could use, you know, absent a firehouse sub, I mean, absent maybe Valvoline could go in there and do oil change. They take, I mean, you know what I mean? It's like, it has some real issues to what it's going to be able to use that. But I'm fine with this.
Can I throw out another suggestion? And Nick reminded me that was something that we talked about too, is if the board's not really kind of clear on exactly what it's looking for, we could do something similar to what Seven Brushell Road is doing under DCR's stewardship is, where they're just putting out a request for expression of interest. So we could say, give us your ideas as kind of a first step here and give people six weeks to turn around, have something back in hand, you know, October, November timeframe, and then use that to inform the RFP. So not kind of bind ourselves to an RFP at this point, but take a first step, put out our expression of interest, reach out to developers or other parties that people have spoken to in the past about it, get some ideas, see what those are, and then use that to inform what we write for an RFP. It'll slow the process down a bit, but maybe it gives you some better ideas to make decisions more quickly down the road.
Clear with that?
I think that's particularly considering how much the real estate market's fluctuated the last two years, I think it would make a lot of sense.
Oh, good idea. Yeah, it sounds good.
So that we can certainly prepare and have ready to go for the next meeting, and then we'll get that out shortly thereafter.
Go ahead.
And just so you know, I have my own opinions as a resident, but I fully support whatever you do. I realize that you folks have a lot on your plate and that you're trying to make the best decisions for the town. We're grateful for the support you've given to us as a Fire Station Building Committee and do whatever you think is best for the town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I ask, Jean, are you here for moral support? I also want to recognize Mr. Solomon, Jean Solomon sits, an original member of the Fire Station Building Committee, a dedicated member of the Fire Station Building. I saw him tour, I think I've seen him twice the last two weeks touring the new headquarters. He didn't see me, I was in the second floor looking out the window, but, thank you, Jean. Okay, item number 10, discussion approval contract amendment with Vertex for Owners Project Management Services for the East Milton Fire Station Project. Oh, no, wait, that's coming, we're coming back.
No, no, we should do this. So this is, Vertex is the current project manager that oversaw the headquarters project. The Fire Station Building Committee has recommended approval of this contract amendment. This amendment would cover their services, beginning with bidding for East Milton through construction administration and through closeout. It's about $848,000 for all of those services. It's already accounted for in the project budget.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion? Motion's right here.
I'll make it. I'll make the motion that we approve.
Contract amendment.
Contract amendment for Vertex.
For Ocean project management services right here.
Oh, I've got it right there. Okay, for owners project management services for the East Milton Fire Station Project.
Second, my Mr. Zoll, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item number, I see Mr. Berkeley here. Do you want to jump to that?
Yeah, it's next now, actually, 11.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm writing all over my sheets tonight. Good evening. Welcome to item 11, is discussion approval of the water and sewer rates fiscal year 2025. That will begin July of next year, correct?
No, so, good evening, Mr. Chair.
Oh, they won't, all right, so I'm just, sorry.
So Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So the rates we're setting tonight are applicable in this current fiscal year. So we have July bills to send out that these rates apply.
Recording in progress.
So with that, so thank you, everyone. Nice to see everybody. With me tonight is Todd Procup from the firm Wooded and Current. Wooded and Current is an engineering firm that's been doing the town's water and sewer rate analysis for probably 15 years now. They have a long dedicated history and lots of institutional knowledge about our system. They also do a lot of work to design and oversee our construction projects. So they're, you know, involved in the debt service side of the business too. So Milton is a MWA Community Mass Water Resource Authority. So we take in water from the state's system, water coming from the Quabon Reservoir, Watchus Reservoir, and their treatment facilities. We bring it in to town, it's metered. So on the water side, we pay exactly what enters the town, it's measured by the gallon. And then we distribute it to our properties and then collect it on the sewage side. Sewage is collected, transported to the Deer Island Treatment Plant where it's cleaned and sent out to the ocean. And so we pay for that treatment on the sewer side. Sewer calculations are a lot more complicated, it's more like an electric bill than the water bill. So they take into account population, the maximum monthly flow. So rain is a big influencer of sewage flows. So you have to, the MWA balances what Milton produces versus all the other communities. So, yeah, and they look at a three-year average as opposed to actually looking at the flows that entered in that calendar year. So the tricky part in why we use a rate consultant is the MWA assesses us per calendar year, we operate on a fiscal year. And so their bill is 18 months behind when we actually use the water. So our FY '25 rates are paying our calendar '23 water consumption. So we don't know exactly how much water we're going to sell this year, but it needs to raise enough money to pay the bill to the MWA. So that's, that's the finesse that's required. And it makes the timeframe a little tight where we need to see what happened at year end as far as revenues come in and then design a rate to break even to be able to raise that revenue requirement. So the goal is always to make the rates as low as possible for the residents. So we design them to just break even and no more than that. So Todd has a presentation, a quick few slides. He's going to walk through how we arrived at the numbers tonight and then, you know, obviously happy to take any questions following that, if that works for you guys.
Go ahead.
You should have it now.
We got it. Just move the microphone over.
Thanks, thanks very much, folks. So thanks, Chase. As Chase mentioned, my name is Todd Procup from Wooded and Current. Been doing this for a few years, looking at water sewer rates in Milton. And so we've just got a quick presentation. And basically, we're going to run through water expenses, sewer expenses, and then how we arrived at the proposed rates here. So most, I guess, all the costs there and revenues from the right-hand side, those are all what was approved at the town meeting a few months ago. So that's where all those come from. And again, as Chase mentioned, we're looking at, you know, just trying to level fund, trying to cover the costs that are anticipated to occur in this fiscal year. And in order to do that, we need to be able to predict how many gallons of water the town is going to sell and how many gallons of sewage the town's going to have to dispose of. And so we look at annual averages and sort of overall trends to do that. In this case, when we look at the expenses, water expenses are down slightly, 1.4%. It's not much, but it's something, driven largely by a decrease in the MWA assessment and some debt service falling off. You can see there's small increases in directs and indirects that kind of temper those a little bit, but still result in a net reduction. See if this works. When we look at water consumption trends, overall, the water consumption in town has been, it's been up and down quite a bit, and so we're looking at a three-year average trend. But overall, has been, it's trending, the water usage has been overall trending down slightly. And so you can see here the different, the tiered rates that we are looking at. When, what that looks like when we look at the, you know, overall rate setting in the tiers that Milton uses, that increases, you know, it's, we're proposing a 3% increase across the board there to level fund those. And so you can see, you know, that average bill per quarter is going to go up a little bit less than $10, about, you know, $7 or $8 per quarter for the average water bill. So again, a relatively modest increase overall. We can do the same thing on the sewer side. And here, we do see that sewer expenses are anticipated to rise 4%. So, you know, again, somewhat modest, but certainly more than that reduction on the water side, unfortunately, largely driven by the increase in the MWA assessment. You know, you can see when the total utility cost is 9.4 million, the MWA is 6.8 million, it's the vast majority of that cost, right? And so when that, when there's a 6.5% increase in that cost, decreases in everything else, they're just, they're not going to make up for that. And so again, that's the largest driver of that 4% number. There was a small decrease, all right, there was a decrease in debt service significant by percentage, but not that huge overall when we look at the numbers. And then there were small increases in directs and indirects as well. And again, all of the, both the cost and the revenue numbers on the right-hand side are based on the town meeting article that was passed a few months ago. Again, here, we can kind of look at the sewage trends. Again, here we can kind of look at the sewage trends overall. And you can see, you know, there is a noted decline in the amount of sewage that the town is selling. That sounds like a good thing, but it also means that we need to spread those costs over fewer gallons. And so it, it means that the rate has to be a little bit higher because the costs are what they are if you're going to sell fewer gallons.
Never heard the term we sell sewage before.
Well, yeah, it's like a funny.
Never knew we're in the sewage selling business, but.
Yeah, it's a funny thing and, but, but right, it is, it's, it's, I guess, the way that you're selling the disposal of the sewer, which I think is maybe a little more.
Just a unique word.
So going through, so again, with the increase in cost here and then the decrease in the amount of gallons, it does cause a little bit larger of an increase on the sewer side. So we're looking at, you know, 7.8% spread equally across all those different tiers. The increase here then is, you know, has a little more impact on the average bill at about $35. You can see on the, on the average bill. We do, as part of this kind of report, we set up a lot of different, you know, case scenarios, different sort of household types, what, you know, what they might experience here. I think the, probably the best one to look at to understand is the middle one is the, sort of the MWA is like sort of standard household example bill there. And you can see, you know, when you, when we combine those two rate increases, we will see, you know, an average of about $40 a quarter in increase. It's 6.1% overall when we blend the 3% on the water side and the 7, 8 on the sewer side. And, you know, if you look there across the different households, obviously are, you know, have different usages. For someone, you know, living alone without a lot of irrigation usage, the, you'll see the increases are a lot more modest. Those are the kind of folks on the left side of that table. For, you know, places that use a lot of water, have big yards, maybe are institutional, the increases are not as modest.
Just a quick question. Don't a lot of those, right Chase, like they, they run a separate water service so they don't pay twice?
Yes, so we have, residents have the ability to get a second water meter and measure just their irrigation and they don't pay sewer charges on that. It's just a water-only bill for all outdoor use that, you know, we know doesn't go into the sewer system. And we've seen that increase and, you know, likely due to water becoming more expensive just with time. It's now somewhat worthwhile to do the plumbing work to get that second meter, whereas, you know, 10, 15 years ago, to pay a plumber to do all that work to put a second meter in, it took a lot longer to recover that, that cost. So there's been a steady trend of people adding those second meters.
Curtis as well.
Can you remind everyone, I know we learned this last year, but in terms of the specific tiers, what's the general, like, how would somebody know if they don't necessarily know, watching this meeting, listening, which tier they might fall in? And is there a way for folks to change their tiers based on their usage?
Yeah, I, there's a slide that has the.
We have consumption by tier.
But basically your tiers are based solely on your usage. So the first 600 cubic feet have a set price. The next 600 to 3,000 cubic feet, that price goes up and it's in, it's a steep incline, particularly on the sewer side. So what that does is that shifts the burden of cost to the biggest users. So universities and large properties are paying a much more price per gallon premium than a smaller user.
And same for sewer.
Yeah, and sewer is even more steep. Yeah.
Thank you.
But everybody pays, you know, everybody's first 600 cubic feet are in that, that first tier, right? It's, it's not like you.
So you pay up to the, all of tier one and then potentially you pay into tier two or maybe all of tier two.
Right. So if you use 601 cubic feet, you pay one cubic foot in tier two, not all 601. There's no like big cliff, you know?
That's fair. So the key answer to that is what are the tier levels like? What are you saying 600 cubic feet is?
Cut off for tier.
Cut off for tier one and then what's the cutoff for tier two?
It's, they're right here. So 3,000 is the cutoff for tier two.
And Todd, if you go just back to the last slide there that showed the chart.
The one with the pie?
Yes, no, the very last one. Yeah. So if you can see here where it shows somebody in case one, who's maybe somebody who lives alone, they're stuck in tier one. In the example that they use, the MWA example, which is a family of four, their consumption is about 3,000 a quarter, which puts them into tier two. So a smaller family of four can expect to probably stay in tier two for those billing. And that's what that chart is showing there, to give you a sense of what that might.
I think it's important to note, it's, it's the same rate regardless. It's just your usage that drives that cost up.
And that's, it's measured quarterly, the 600 square cubic feet is a quarterly.
Built quarterly, yeah. Yep.
You good?
Yes.
Good?
And just real quick, Mr. Chair, if I could, just on top of that, yeah. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Milano and Amy Dexter. So, you know, after we received the report from Wooded and Current, we meet internally. You know, we consider other factors like what are the reserves in the enterprise funds? What do those balances look like? Do we need to be concerned that we have enough reserve for future years and that type of thing? So it really is a collective process. It's not just me. So they deserve a lot of the credit.
Thank you. I think Chase touched on it a little bit with the sewer enterprise funds, just to talk about a little bit like how we use those, what type of reserve we want to have and keep in them. And also I know years ago, we used to have somebody, I think it was Kathy Dunphy, who was our MWA rep. Do we have somebody that does that now?
So it's me. So I'm the Milton MWA Advisory Board Member.
Okay, okay.
Wasn't it Mike Dennehy before you?
I think it was vacant. Yeah, I think after Kathy it might have gone vacant for a little while.
Okay.
I knew, when you said it, I'm like, he's sitting right in front of you.
But that gives us a voting, a voting seat for the, when the programs come up. So we access their local assistance pipeline programs, which gives us grant money and zero interest loans. And, you know, that gives us a say at the table for those.
And the other thing that we are very lucky to be in the MWA for is on the treatment side, it's not a headache that we have. We don't have any pump stations. We're not drilling wells and pumping water out and then having to test for PFAS and then treat for PFAS. So we're fortunate to be in the MWA. It's expensive water, but it's clean and tastes good. In terms of the reserves, we are in a very strong shape on the water enterprise fund. So we can afford years where we don't hit our revenue targets. And one thing we're actually been doing with the enterprise fund on the water side is last year we took money out to buy down the rates a bit. This year, we are paying for $345,000 worth of capital equipment directly out of those reserves. So rather than issuing debt, because we have the cash, we're using that. Our goal would probably be around 20% of our annual budget that's supported by rates to be in the reserves. As they were mentioning, if we have a couple of years with low consumption, we still have high bills. And if we don't have the water or the sewer rate revenue coming in, we could deplete those reserves and then be turned into taxpayers to support these enterprise funds, which are supposed to be funded by the rate payers directly. Sewer is where we have a little bit more of a concern. We have about a half a million in reserve there, which is a low percentage. We have about 2.4 on the water side and that's a smaller budget than on the sewer side. So, you know, one of the goals that we have would be hopefully those reserves can build up a little bit more. So we have a little bit more flexibility. One thing that we've been asking Chase to do at the end of the year is to slow down some of the spending on the sewer side, especially around capital, not capital projects, but investments into the system. Because we've been worried about where the revenues are going to come in. So that hurts our flexibility operationally year over year. And so it's been an added concern with the sewer side. And if you look, zoom out even more on consumption on sewer, it's just dropping slowly, slowly, slowly with annual blips. But unfortunately, people use less. We still have high bills. We still have to spread that cost around. And with the blended bill, I think if we're able to stay low on the water, it means the average bills will go up a little bit less than we have. And I think even with these numbers, we're still at a 3% on historical average over the long term in terms of what our annual rate increases are. So we're in decent shape, but we have to keep an eye on the sewer enterprise fund in terms of where that is on a reserves basis.
And then it sounds like you can't, so there's very separate funds. You could never, you can't put them together to deflect some of the cost on the sewer side by taking some from water.
Right.
Good idea. I thought of it my heartaches.
Right.
If, if, for example, we had a low revenue year depleted our reserves, the money would come out of the general fund free cash. And so they would hit free cash first. And then the other thing, it was mentioned in passing, but I just want to reiterate, it's important when we're talking about the rates. While some of the nonprofit institutions don't pay property taxes, they use water, they use sewer and they, they are paid and charged for their usages here.
Yep. And just a little silver lining on top of that. So these larger projects that are now occurring, so take the Ice House project, for example, they had to pay us a one-time fee of $150,000 just for connecting to our system. And we put that money right back into the, to the rates. So it does subsidize, you know, because they're generating new flows that didn't exist that we now have to transport and pay for. So we kept that money upfront for those projects and put it right into the funds.
So this would be similar on Meg Lane, the 40B on Meg Lane?
Yeah, yeah. So it's driven by number of bedrooms, number of units. So the larger the bill, the bigger the fee.
Anybody else? You're good? You're good?
Yes.
I will say that everyone, Nick, you'll know, you're a DCR man. Everyone, you know, we turn on our water in this town and, you know, runs, everyone should take a visit to Quabon and just follow. And I've had the opportunity on more than one occasion to work, not to work out there and then be to visit it. It is probably one of the most amazing things I've ever seen in the state from a natural system. And how it feeds and the care and maintenance that goes into maintaining the quality of water that, that we enjoy that comes from there. And it's absolutely miraculous. It really is. We are very fortunate. You look at the issues that some of our neighbors have that have independent reservoir systems and some of the issues that come up with them. I mean, Quabon, we are really, really, really very fortunate to be part of that system.
Where would we be without it?
Oh, I know, I know. Anything else? You're good? You're good? Are we good to?
I'll move to approve the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2025.
So do I have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. I just, it's good. So, so listen, before you leave, I'd just take a moment to thank you and your staff for everything that they do. Hot or cold, snow or wet, just, I've always said that, especially from having spent the majority of my life in public safety and not in this seat, not in politics. But to see that the work that they do each and every day is a credit to the department and to you as the boss. And since you're here, I just want to take a minute to say that to you tonight and thank you for everything.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll certainly pass that down. Yeah.
I'm sure they'll all jump up and down.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay. Now, do you want to, do you want to, do you want to go back to?
I haven't heard from her.
All right. So we'll keep going, moving right along. If it's after 10, she's going to have a problem. If it's even near 10, we're going to have a problem. Okay, so item number 12. Item number 12 is a discussion on county hospital closure. I, I wanted to put this on the agenda because I had the occasion to meet with President Fernandez at BI Milton right, I think, two days after this was announced. And came to Mr. Milano with some of their concerns. And I know just since I brought it to his, his attention that he's also gone and met with Coastal this week to kind of, the closing of Carney, according to President Fernandez, is be much different than the closing of Quincy City. You know, for full disclosure, almost 30 years ago, there were times when you'll notice, I'll be in a, in a meeting here and when I speak of something particularly emotional, my voice will crack and I will become kind of, when I was a young policeman, I think 29 years of age, I was struck in the head by a prisoner one night and unbeknownst to me and everybody else around me, that I was born with a brain aneurysm on the right side of my brain. Three days later, while driving a cruiser, doing a funeral escort for a Thomas funeral home on the Southeast Expressway, that aneurysm ruptured and I seized and crashed the cruiser and broke a lot of bones and laid on the side of the Southeast Expressway. Not expected to survive and it was a, I don't, I tell this by memory because I was unconscious. I don't know any of this. They couldn't get an ambulance to me and a couple of motorcycle cops saw a found ambulance in a coffee shop down underneath and commandeered, went down and got it. And they want to go on the wrong way and they brought me to the county hospital. And my prognosis to survive that night was not very good. And it was unexpected that I would live a day. And I spent many days in intensive care there and I would not be alive today. It took me over a year, I think, to come back to work without the skill and expertise of what the county hospital was. And so I've always had an affinity for it. But on a, on a more important aspect, one of the things that, and I don't say this, because the consequences with that closing are going to affect our community. It's going to affect the staff that work there. It's going to affect the patients. It's going to affect the police, fire, EMS that bring patients there, the people who walk in there. It's going to affect, you know, so many different things. And one of the major things that is going to impact this community is one very skilled resident who spent his nearly his entire, resident of this town, who spent nearly his entire life in the mental health field said, there's nowhere to make up those 30 inpatient beds. There's, you know, there's nowhere. And if, for anyone who's watching, anyone in this room knows, if you've visited any ED anywhere, according to BI Milton, you're waiting hours nowadays. And some days these EDs go cold black, which means they can't, they have to defer. So the reason I bring this up is I think I'd like to, I've already said this to Nick, at least have Nick reach out to. I know that Mayor Wu has tried to already designate that it can't be developed for anything other than a medical facility. President Fernandez gave me a great idea that perhaps a public-private partnership could be developed to create a regional mental health facility. I know Ms. Musto is in the health field and is going to have, it's now that I brought this up, it's kind of held away and this is some of the, some of you others may. But this is very important for us in a region, in a community. We are now going to be the host of the only hospital. We've now had two closings on both our sides, Carney to the north and Quincy City east of us three years ago. And I would like for us to try to become part of the solution to this, whether it's from the governor. I am concerned that the governor, that the governor did, you know, Boston Medical Center, it looks, it came to agreement on St. Elizabeth and Good Sam and Carney got left out, which is one of the most needy neighborhoods for this facility, still kind of out in the cold. So I wanted to bring it up and I welcome any comments. I know I'm just putting it out there tonight. I don't think anyone knew what I was going to say, but this is significant for our region. It really is. And I don't think this is something we should just talk about. I think we should try to do, where we can as leaders of this community to try and help create some type of vision or to help come to a solution that serves. Because there are many residents who do go with that. I talked to a woman the other day. She's, she's been following there for years and it's just. So any thoughts, comments, anyone?
Tweet, tweet.
Mr. Sol.
No, go ahead. You go first.
Mr. Sol, I think this is going to be long.
Well, my boss is a, is an ER doc too, so I have, I have a lot of thoughts on this. And I was actually speaking with a gentleman who runs eight different emergency departments around eastern Massachusetts. We were talking about Carney. I'm extraordinarily concerned about this. I'm concerned that there were bids in for Carney that weren't seen as, as high enough and so they weren't accepted. I think we're going to be paying the price directly here in Milton. Residents of Mattapam, Dorchester are going to be paying the price. Folks that use the Faulkner and Jamaica Plain are going to be paying the price. All of the emergency patients and really the emergency departments are the, are the safety net of our, of our healthcare system. And anybody who's had a kid that's had a problem in the middle of the night or, or a parent that's had a problem in the middle of the night, you know how life-threatening it can be if the emergency systems or emergency departments are not prepared to receive you. And the closure of Carney is going to be devastating for a lot of communities and there, there will be real health implications. So I would be very much in favor of figuring out what the town's role could potentially be in promoting any sort of solution to keeping Carney open, whether it's as a mental health hospital, whether it's mental health with ED, something, something along those lines. Because otherwise it will literally cost lives, as you know from your own personal experience, Mr. Wells.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. As somebody who works in the healthcare field, as a nurse practitioner, I work in geriatrics. It is terrible for us all to, to close a hospital and especially Carney for the population that it serves in the community. And when we have to send patients out for psychiatric reasons, there are very few places that we can send our patients to. And if we have to send them nine times out of 10, they're going to be sitting in an emergency room with everybody else. And that really is troubling because they need help and there won't be the help there. And, you know, even before this closure, the hospital systems are having problems where we're getting alerts to try to triage our patients and not send them in if we can help it, because the hospitals are overwhelmed. So now to have another closure. because the hospitals are overwhelmed. So now to have another closure of a hospital that serves a certain population in a community, I think is really devastating. And also for, let's not forget the workers that work there between the, the hospital staff, anybody from housekeeping to dietary, all of the things that make the hospital work. They're all, you know, gonna be out of jobs and that affects the community as well. Um, and I think it's just, you know, right now, how healthcare is really pushed to the, to the brim, you know, and it's really another piece of a puzzle falling like that is gonna be devastating. And again, I think the need for psychiatric beds is huge between, you know, young people and old. And so, um, I wonder what will happen, you know, with that type of a closure. Terrible.
I.
I, I just wanted to say, I, I agree. It, it, it's gonna have a huge impact. And I wonder why, I mean, this is an abstract question, but but why the other ones could be saved and this one can't? It's gotta be money, but it's just, I don't know.
Did you see that? I didn't see, I don't know what the two bids were, so.
I don't know exactly what they, I know that they received bids on them that weren't up to the level.
To what they want.
Yeah.
And, and the, the other thing is, what do they do, you know, are they triaging the staff needs of what, where are these people gonna go? Like, and even for B I D Milton, I don't want to put words in it, like, they're gonna have to up this, like, someone should be proactive here. I, I want to look at this in a multi-faceted way from a region because this is going to affect, you know, it's, and, and Ms. Musto is right. Um, when you're, the difficulty here is a, a car, you could go to Carney to be, you know, cleared and approved, you could wind up going upstairs, running out of bed. Here, you're gonna have to bring in another agency, like Social Method, to, to, to come in, clear them, find a bed, and that can take days. You, you could do, you could do twenty-four, forty-eight hours sitting on a stretcher in E D. And so, like, I, I just know you, you and I have had, actually, Mr. Denny and I, in my time as chief, and I'm sure Chief King, I mean, B I D went a long way to try to address this in the past few years is, you know, we've had to have officers stay there for like hours at a time to watch a patient because there's no, no bed for them to be in. It's that there's a safety aspect, having them in a general area of, of an emergency department. So, um, I don't want to put this on you and I'm more than willing, I'd like to try and bring some of these, I, I talked about perhaps, I did ask President Fernandez if he'd think about this, come in. There is one resident I don't want to announce him tonight because I don't want to say it, who was, you know, very involved, was, was in the Patrick administration, very involved in this, who really kind of gave me an hour's worth. But I think, I know perhaps on a state level, they may look at us now as being anti, but I would like to try to be part of the solution versus, um, this is something that we can't sit back and two years from now and say, oh, my God, what did we do? Like, there's something we need to do now. So that's why I wanted to bring it up, so we could at least, and, and obviously to, to, to all the, you already kind of realize it, you've already realized the effects of it. So I'll leave with that for now. So, um, thank you. So, item number thirteen, discussion update, homo.
I think Joanna.
Oh, she's on?
Yep. So we can go to item eight.
Putting my, putting the car in reverse. We're gonna back up to item number eight, which is, um, discussion approval, bond sale awards, and we welcome to our meeting our town treasurer, Mrs. McCarthy. I don't see, you see her?
She's, uh, joining now.
Okay. Good evening. Well, who you want to open this? You want to have, how do you want to do?
She can, she can run it all yours.
Mr. Milano's throwing you right under the bus here. I apologize. I didn't know he was gonna do that to you. So, um, you can be as brief as you want. Good evening.
Well, I'm, thank you, Nick. Um, thank you for deferring me to a little bit later in the agenda here. I appreciate your flexibility. Um, so this is, this is really just to kind of take a vote to issue, um, some debt, some series A and some series B debt. Um, I, I believe that the vote language is in front of you, um, and it's extensive. And I appreciate that the members having come in and, um, and signed, uh, documents in advance. Um, so I can give you a little bit of the, the backdrop of, of these bonds in particular, but the series A bonds were for fire station design and construction. We have a, um, a bond anticipation note outstanding that, um, comes due a couple of days after this issuance is set to close later this week. So most of the money that we will, um, receive, um, from this issuance will go to pay that short-term note outstanding. Um, so like I said, the, the amount for the series A bonds, the, the twenty million nine thirty, um, in, in principle is, uh, in large part to, to, um, finance the fire station construction, um, at about eighteen point five million. Um, the fire station design holds the, the remaining two point four million on, on those series A notes. Um, so we went out to bid, uh, we got ten bids. Um, and I think you all know, I think, um, um, Mr. Milano had given you an update on our, um, S and P ratings call that we recently had. So that was a factor in, in obviously, um, the bids that were provided, um, which was great. And so I, I think that we got like a reasonable, um, true interest cost at uh, three point six seven percent on this. Um, that, that generated ten bids to the town and we, we took the, the best offer. Um, any questions on that in particular?
Nope. Do, anyone? Comments? Questions? You in motion? Are we ready for a motion? No, hold on.
Let me just, let me just, um, um, highlight the series B bonds. So that, that is an issuance of two point seven three five in, in principle, um, a smaller issuance. Um, those are to finance various projects that were authorized and approved at town meetings. I think most of the, the approvals happened in the May twenty twenty-three town meeting. Um, I would, you know, just looking at the list of, of purposes, I think the, the largest is the salt shed at three hundred and seventy-six thousand. Oh, wait, animal shelter at six hundred and fifty thousand. Um, there's a couple roadways at seven hundred and four thousand. Um, and then various other, uh, you know, town projects and, and, um, and purposes. So, so the series B issuance of two point seven three five came in with four bids, uh, a true interest cost there of two point nine one percent. So that also was a pretty good rate. Um, and we, yeah, that, that was to, uh, again, to Raymond James and Associates as the agenda states. So we're looking to issue these, um, with the date of August twenty ninth. And like I said, the large, um, portion of the proceeds will be used to pay off the bond anticipation notes that come due on August thirtieth.
Good. Thank you. So, at least for the purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion to approve twenty million nine hundred and thirty thousand general obligation fire station bonds, series A dated August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four to Huntington Securities, Inc., and approve two million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars general obligation municipal purpose loan of twenty twenty-four bonds, series B dated August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four to Raymond James and Associates Incorporated and to waive the reading of the entire formal vote. Thank God. But thank God, leave the thank God's heart out of it. Second.
I'll second, yeah.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye. Thank you. It's unanimous. Um, I believe we've got, we're about to, you can go back to your dutiful, whatever it is you're doing. Thank you, Mrs. McCarthy. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, guys. Have a great night.
Take care, Joanna. Take care. Okay, so now we're gonna go back to. Yeah, thirteen. Okay, so, huh, discussion update, homo petition for senior means tested property tax exemption. Mr. Milano or Mr. Connor?
Mr. Connors.
Mr. Connors, I'm, I'm gonna step down for once.
I already know about this song. Can you, Nick, pull up the presentation? We will be relatively brief, uh, happy to answer questions, but.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah. So as we have talked about the potential for an operational override and there was discussion around debt exclusion for the building, one of the things that, uh, Nick had asked us to look at at town hall was ways to, uh, both look at the revenue side, but also, um, you know, exemptions and tax relief side as well for folks that are in town. Uh, one of the things that we came up with as we looked at communities, um, that are our peers and that we, you know, talk to on a regular basis is the idea of a means-tested, um, form of property tax relief for seniors that allows folks to age in place, uh, and to support that effort. The goals are really easy here. You know, that was, that's the broad idea that Nick gave us. These are the goals that we had as we looked at this. We wanted it to be easy to understand for the folks that would be applying, which in this case would be seniors, easy to administer for our staff, particularly in the assessor's office, easy to apply for, um, and then easy for the town to provide. And it's really this idea that we didn't want to be reinventing the wheel, but we wanted to look for opportunities to provide relief, um, in ways that are meaningful, uh, and use frameworks that are already in place. So just very briefly, the idea of what is means-tested, it's a criteria to measure. In this case, the sum of the person's assets to determine who would qualify for this tax exemption. Um, if we can just go to the next slide, I think that's the one we. The, the Commonwealth Authority provides within the tax code for the senior circuit breaker. There's a lot of words here, but in short, if you're a homeowner and more than ten percent of your message's income is spent, um, on your property taxes, or if you're a renter and more than twenty-five percent is spent on property taxes, there is a benefit that is available to you. Uh, it's a dollar-for-dollar match, uh, for every dollar, uh, beyond that ten percent or twenty-five percent threshold that the state provides as a credit, uh, up to a maximum. That maximum is something that can be adjusted year to year. Uh, the current maximum is, uh, twenty foot, two thousand five hundred and ninety. So again, I'll be happy to answer questions as we go, but I don't want to read through this whole slide for folks. I want to make sure you're still awake when I get to the end.
If we're taking questions as we go, just on the last slide.
Feel free.
You open.
I'll try to answer it, yeah.
The assessed value, um, the very last, is that something that scales on an annual basis?
Okay. So the, both the benefit and that can be adjusted as well as the income levels.
Thank you.
Adjusted by the Commonwealth, not by the community. Um, so what we're proposing tonight is, you know, sort of the beginning of this discussion, is the idea that the town meeting would approve a homo petition that establishes this local exemption. In this case, and this is something that's done differently in every community, we want to make sure that the match percentage is set by the board, uh, annually. And we also would want to provide for the opportunity for town meeting to provide authorization for this, uh, at regular interval, intervals that could be decided. Both these cases allow us to look at this on a set basis, whether it's a annual, every three years, every five years, some, it gives some opportunity for the community to make sure uh, that this is working. Uh, the idea is that we would use the circuit breaker eligibility that the state income tax already provides uh, as a requirement from Milton. There's an annual application process where folks would come in with their tax, uh, their taxes that they submitted to the assessor's office for affirmation of their eligibility. And then one of the questions that obviously comes up is what does it cost? And that's what this last piece is uh, meant to address, uh, or begin to address is all taxpayers are sharing, sharing the burden, um, that is put on seniors by shifting taxes. It is not going to lower the overall revenue to the town. So if we can keep moving. So, you know, the proposal would provide a match up to a hundred percent that would be set by Milton. Uh, the eligibility criteria would match the state program. So when it comes to income assessed value and that sort of thing, but we would add the idea that residency in Milton is a requirement. Uh, the ten years is not at the address that they are seeking this relief at. It's just sort of a commitment that they've shown to the community over time. And now that we're showing to help, uh, try to allow them to age in place. No other significant, no other significant assets. And then trust documents need to be reviewed, um, again, by the assessor's office to make sure that, uh, the owner is the person that is, you know, the beneficiary and go on.
How do you determine if an asset is significant?
We would have to set that in this process before we adopt it.
Thank you.
Is, you mean as a, as a price, what?
Yeah, it, whether, you know, it would be, you know, the, the types of things that they talk about are trusts, second homes, things that would normally, you know, sort of identify that you should not be availing this opportunity of yourself. But I can, I have examples that I didn't bring tonight, but that I can share as we would move forward.
Thank you.
Of what other communities have decided to use. And we could also always set our own in that case as well.
So to item one, uh, bullet one, ten-year residency, it's not ten-year ownership, ownership, it's ten-year residency. So like if a person lived, was a renter for like four or five years and then they now own for five, six, you know, sometimes it takes a long time to own a, particularly in, all right, so.
Or alternatively, if you downsize to a smaller home as, as you're a senior, but you, you're still on that cusp on the, on the income side.
Okay.
But it's a demonstration that you've been a taxpayer in town, you've contributed to the community over time. One of the questions that's come up is, you know, we talked to Nick about this and others are, what are some other communities that have done this? This is, as you can see, sort of spread geographically. Um, it's a representative list. It's not an exhaustive list. We can get together the, the final total number. But these are communities that have already adopted it, have had it in place or in the process of doing so. So the impacts, um, and this is where I will also get to cost, which I know is, uh, an issue. It allows seniors who have contributed to the community over time to age in place. It doesn't lower the revenue, as I mentioned, overall. Uh, it is something where we would look at what the shift would be when the tax rate is set. These are the most recent numbers that, uh, Division of Local Services had, which is for the twenty twenty-two tax year. There were four hundred and fifteen filers. The total, total claimed in town was four hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the average credit there, obviously. When I have that anticipated usage for one, one forty to two hundred filers, that's after talking to a couple of assessors who have done this. The, the number one, sort of off-the-top number is a renter is not eligible for this because of property tax relief. Um, so there are renters in town who do qualify for the senior circuit breaker, as I mentioned in that initial eligibility slide, but they would not be eligible here because this is solely meant to be, uh, trying to keep property taxes more affordable for folks that are in town. There's then folks that are sort of on the income limit, uh, that by getting this credit or by doing something for work, they might go back and forth and be, they sort of dip in and out of the program year to year. Um, they're not in it on a consistent annual basis, but it's every, every other year, every two years. Uh, and then there's the folks that have to come in and prove the eligibility, uh, with whatever standards we set, Mr. Zol. So again, it, it starts to lower that number from four fifteen, uh, a little, a little bit to what the, the anticipated impact would be. If we could go to the next slide, I think I have the numbers there. So in looking, um, at one that I, I spoke to was Hingham, they recently introduced this. Um, they have had approximately a hundred over the first two years. Uh, and so that, this is the number that I looked at here. Um, the maximum credit to the, that the state allows right now is twenty-five ninety. That's for this year. It was reset for tax year twenty twenty-five, or twenty twenty-four, sorry. Um, and so that's, we use sort of the maximum credit, even though when you see our averages, we're not maxing out every, every individual here. Uh, so the potential impact would be two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which when we spread across all of the residential, um, units that are part of the, the property tax role, it comes out, it's a little less than thirty and it does not include when we actually would break it between the, the impact on both commercial, industrial and residential. So it's sort of stayed on the higher side, um, with again, that and the average assessed value of the home in town being a million dollars, which is also at the LS number. It's not just something we pulled out of thin air.
It's a thirty-dollar annual bill, not a thirty-dollar quarterly bill?
Correct. Yes.
I, I know that this is your last slide.
Yes.
Um, so can, following along secretly here, um, on the, um, the other communities that have done this program.
Yeah.
On, are they usually, um, for the towns at least, are they usually having this done by the select board or done by town meetings? And do they have a usual, is there like a standard, like, most towns are select board every three years?
Setting the number?
Yeah, in terms of setting the number.
So it, generally it's the select board that either sets a number at the beginning and they stick with it, or as they've moved, as the sort of program has evolved and progressed over time, they've allowed the select board to set it on an annual basis. Instead of, you know, sort of setting it at a hundred percent or more than a hundred percent match, uh, and just sort of rolling with it as the state will slowly be, you know, raising what the, the max is.
Right.
To index.
Okay, thank you.
So that would be something that we could decide, obviously, before the homo petition would go for town meeting.
So to Mr. Zol's point, though, this will require us to create an article for town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Homo petition, we want to do this at the annual?
I, I think what we've talked about is whenever the next available town meeting is, we'd want to have this in shape because we want to get it filed as soon as possible at the legislature because that process alone could take a while.
I get it.
So to get it rolled out sooner rather than later for, um, folks in Milton, it would, it's gonna take a, this'll be a long runway. So the sooner we do it, the better it would be.
This is a great idea, by the way. Thanks for all your work.
Sure.
I think there's a lot still to learn and work out, obviously. Yeah.
We know when he puts that in the agenda meeting, I, I, when I got, I'm like, what are you, what? Okay, so I, any other questions? You're good? We good? There's no motion. Just a quick question on Westford. Why are they a three-year pilot? They want to see how it works?
That was the way that they passed the homo.
Oh, so they passed it?
Yeah. See how it was, yeah.
I'm just wondering, can you just go over again the money in terms of how much? So is it 1,000 per household?
Right now, the maximum is 2,590 for this.
And what are we looking at basing it? So when you're doing these number calculations, what is the dollar amount you're looking at?
That's based on 100 residents being eligible and getting the full credit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Out of the 415. That 415 would not be the number that would come in.
Right.
Because renters are included there. And then there's folks that will dip in and out on the eligibility side with their income.
Okay.
So this would be 100 households?
That, in this math, that's 100 households, yes.
That's what I, that's I, I want to distinguish between this is 100.
This must, so this is also, it's 100% match. So if the board decided we wanted to move forward with 50 or 75, it raises and lowers the number of folks that could be included under that same, you know, 259,000 or lowers the overall impact.
I mean, I think it's an interesting program. I'm just trying to wrap my head around the numbers and what that would mean. But I think it's, you know, a great way to keep people in town, you know?
Yeah, and you're anticipating it would be 140 to 200 people.
That's based on the conversations I've had with assessors in other communities, but yeah. And the other, I've talked to Charlie about this. We've also, you know, spent a little bit of time and will continue to look at other exemptions that the town hasn't acted on or accepted. Just to make sure that when we do come forward with this, we're trying to come with as many opportunities as possible for property tax exemptions for folks that are eligible that makes sense for the community.
So Zoll.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. I'm assuming, well, maybe I shouldn't assume anything. If some, if, we have a lot of seniors who are in affordable housing. Are they automatically excluded because, or are they included because of their average median income? Do you know what that?
I would, I want to research it to be sure. I don't want to answer you and give you the wrong answer.
I just think something worth looking into.
Right.
But, because there is, you know, subsidies there.
Are you meaning like affordable as far as owned affordable or affordable like renting affordable?
No, it's owned because it's just for owners, ownership. But, you know, I'm just thinking in terms of like the income versus the, versus the tax payments, like.
I know there are, there are impacts at the state level for housing subsidies, but I want to make sure I give you the right information.
Yeah, that's just something, I'm just curious to know what the impact would be, thanks.
Okay, so we don't need more, this was more informative.
Yeah, just to make sure we had support from the board to keep spelling this out. So the next time we bring it to you, we'll try to hit on, develop the specifics, start it out at a, you know, at 100% match, think about the other significant assets, and have a draft everybody to look at and provide us feedback on from there.
One more question if I can. Just from a, like a timing perspective, if we do have a fall town meeting, when do you think this would basically kick in for seniors to see a reduction in their tax bill?
The new session of the legislature wouldn't start until the beginning of the new year. It really depends on how quickly they would move more than anything else.
So possibly not until calendar year 26.
I mean, I spoke to the assessor that's in Wakefield and Reading.
Right.
And one passed in six weeks, the other one took 18 months.
Okay.
So it literally is, it could be two fiscal years or it could be, you know.
I don't want to say anything, but I get it.
So it really, it depends on legislature. So to Nick's point, as long as we get it in front of town meeting, we've, you know, prepared you all in advance.
Do our job as quick as we can and, yeah, exactly. Thank you, thank you, Nick, appreciate it. That's it.
Get all that, Alain? All right, thank you. All right, moving on, so. Item number 14, discussion approval, Council on Aging Air Source Heat Pump Project. Mr. Milano, you can.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a HVAC retrofit project proposal in your packet with a little more background. This building has the original heating and cooling system approaching end of life. Facilities Department is looking at ways to replace that and had a meeting with one of the firms that we use to do our energy efficiency projects. And they suggested an air source heat pump replacement project, which whereby we would decommission our gas furnace that heats this building and transition over to an air source heat pump system that would provide heating and cooling with electricity. There are major incentives for projects like these available. So we would use incentives through the utilities to combine with a town appropriation to finance the project. So the overall project recommended by facilities is to replace these as proposed by Guardian. And that cost right now is $388,000. We have an appropriation for improvements to this building of $160,000 that was approved as part of the fiscal '25 capital budget. That obviously isn't enough. The utility incentive right now is estimated at $120,000 if we were to move forward with this project. The balance of about $108,000, we could pay back on our bill over five years. No, 0%. So the utility would finance it upfront. We would pay higher than usual utility bills for five years to pay that balance back over that time period. So before we went down that road any further, just wanted to make sure the board would be open to and okay with us doing that and knowing that we would have to budget that accordingly for the next five years. But at the same time, taking advantage of $120,000 in incentives to replace this project. So it would be a major capital project that we're only kicking in about half of the cost at the end of the day.
So I'm only going to go as far as to the members who have been here in the winter to refresh their memories of what it's like here instead of the December, February, and January nights when we're here. So at least to me, from, particularly from the capital perspective, anything that's flexible that uses, you know, normal line item operations or bonding is, but there's something that interests me. Mr. Cohen, this is your business.
The only concern I have is that typically in residential, heat pumps, the cost to operate, the utility bill is twice what it was for gas. And that's often sometimes hidden in this. People are surprised by the fact they hear this super efficient, super, it is super efficient compared to resistance heat, which this has for backup. I just, sometimes the, in residential, it's twice. It costs twice to heat with a heat pump than it does with gas. So just be aware. I know I'm coming in at the last hour to see this for the first time, but that's typically what happens. I don't, I see this kilowatt hour saved, therm saved, annual savings. I don't know if we have time to look at that, but it's, all I know is in residential, people are surprised. They go, the heat pump, it's so efficient and my electric bill's twice what it used to be. That's the surprises I hear out there, so just throwing it out there.
First time you hear that, huh?
No, that's, no, we've heard, we've heard those concerns. I think we trust their analysis. It's also hard in 24, calendar year 2024 to spend major money on upgrading gas lines because we might be faced with looking to phase those out. So I think it's, for that purpose, it's probably worthwhile looking at. If you want a further analysis, happy to provide something on the cost and on the energy use forecast.
Just so we know, I mean, I'm with the whole, the electric, we got to go there and the rest of it, but just so that we understand truthfully what the costs are. That's all I'm saying, you know?
All of a sudden, you have a department head coming in a year later doing her annual budget and her electric costs, you know, trip, you know, for some, on a small, as you know, on a small department like this, all of a sudden, that's a tough one to go ahead.
Oh, no.
And the one last thing too is that the sizing is critical because it, you know, they lose efficiency as it gets colder. So you have to balance between oversizing them a little bit so that at that lower cold, they have enough efficiency and that your resistance electric heat's not kicking in at 30 degrees because then it really will kill you in the cost, so it just.
This is all.
I'm just, so I know that the town has negotiated around like clean energy and we have like municipal energy rates. So I'm curious to know if that plays in here at all. And then also, I would be curious, and Mr. Cohen's 100% right in terms of the electric bill is going. A lot of people that put in heat pumps also put in solar panels. And so it kind of offsets the electricity cost because they're getting, you know, they're, and I know with my house, I don't have a heat pump, but I have like an electric car and I can, you know, watch if I'm charging my car in the winter, like my electricity bill versus like if the sun's out and I'm plugging my car and it's not really affecting anything. So I'm curious in terms of the municipal electric rates and then also in terms of if there is a way or if there would be any incentives to put in solar, which would be again, maybe a higher upfront investment cost, but save money in the long term in terms of the energy expenditure.
I don't think.
Do you have any solar on this one?
Not here. Town hall does, the schools do. The roof will need to be replaced before we could move to that. I don't know if we've had our vendors assess this building for that. We can certainly do that and follow up. But a roof, building envelope and mechanical systems were what we're looking at to address with this building. So that's why we hadn't looked at that necessarily.
Maybe somebody's problem in the future, or opportunity.
But it brings up a good point, so perhaps, I mean, especially for Tom, for consolidated, is that looking forward when this roof comes up, when you do the capital part, do you add solar at that point? And I don't even know, I can't remember. I mean, I know Mr. Clark, private Tim did evaluations, which is how the solar wound up on the town hall and some of the school buildings.
Actually, it'd be better if you did the heat pump first and then later you're looking at the roof, then you would really know what your electricity costs.
Right, and you know you need the solar. So I'm okay with that, but I just think that, I think that, because I'm just thinking of the COA director, you know, two years from now coming, well, you just articulated my, it's great. It's warm in here now, but the electricity bill, so, so. But solar is something long-term you could look at here. But I'm not, it's not, I don't want to get out of my skis. It's not my expertise. I just know that you're right. You want to look at it when you do a roof replacement, so. Do you want a motion on this? Do you need a motion to approve this?
No, as long as it's general comfort with it, we'll nail down a couple of those questions and circle back.
General comfort.
Thanks, thank you.
I said general comfort.
Okay, item 15, discussion approval is the extension of the agreement between DCR and Kane 176 Corporation for the Eulon Ring Permit for a period of three years. Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
So you're going to move to approve the extension?
Yeah, DCR and Kane 176 Corp. for the Eulon Ring Permit for a period of three years.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Zoll. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay, very good. Item 16, discussion approval, this is reappointments to the Conservation Commission. Can I have a motion to reappoint Ingrid Beatty, Arthur Doyle, and Wendy Garpo to the Conservation Commission?
I'll move to reappoint the following individuals to Conservation Commission for a three-year term. Ingrid Beatty, Arthur Doyle, Wendy Garpo.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's going to be, okay. Discussion approval, item 17, one-day local license application. Milton Art Center located at 334, are these all theirs? Are these all?
Yep.
I'm going to, I'm going to do them all. 334 Edge Road, first Friday, October 4th, 2024, 6 to 10. First Friday, November 1st, 6 to 10. Comedy event, November 30th, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. First Friday, December 6th, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It's going to be New Year's Day before we know it, so I have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
It's approved, okay. Item, item 18. So this is a motion to approve the Suffolk Resolves Day proclamation, the Suffolk Resolves. Do I have a copy of that? Is that in my, I don't think I have a copy of it. I was going to read it, but I don't think I have a copy of it. Is it there?
We just got it updated, didn't we?
I can read it or I can display it.
Go ahead, bring it, you can read it. Are you going to display it up on the screen?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, it's here, in the bag.
Do you want to name it?
Do you want me to do, it is my neighbor.
Yeah, you want to do it?
Oh, well, sure, hold on, I can get there.
Good night, Alain.
Good night.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas the Suffolk Resolves was a declaration made on September 9th, 1774 by the leaders of the Suffolk County, there's a misspelling in the county there, Massachusetts to reject the Massachusetts Government Act and called for, sorry, it's called for a boycott of imported goods from Britain unless the intolerable acts were repealed. And whereas the resolves played an integral role in shaping colonial animosity and ultimately contributed to the United States Declaration of Independence in 1776. Is animosity the right word?
I don't know.
Okay, and whereas Dr. Joseph Warren introduced the first draft of the Suffolk Resolves at the Suffolk County Convention Committees on Correspondence of Grand County, on Correspondence on September 6, 1774. Three days later, the declaration was approved at the Daniel Boe's House in Milton, Massachusetts. Following the issuance of the resolves, Paul Revere delivered it to the First Continental Congress in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, where it was endorsed on September 17th, 74, as a show of colonial solidarity. And whereas the Daniel Boe's House was moved from Lower Mills to 1370 Canton Ave. in 1950 in order to prevent its demolition, it is now known as the Suffolk Resolves House and was restored to its original colonial appearance and became the headquarters for the Milton Historical Society. The Suffolk Resolves House was added to the National Register of Historic Places in 1973. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Milton Select Board, in recognition of the 250th anniversary of its passage, do hereby declare September 9th, 2024 as Suffolk Resolves Day in Milton, Massachusetts, given this day Tuesday, August 27, 24. Signed on behalf of Chair of the Select Board.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe, did the historical motion, they drafted it, right? Did they, or did we draft it? They, I believe they.
I think it was a team effort.
It was a team.
Is animosity the right word, though? Isn't, would unity be better in shaping colonial unity? Are we shaping animosity?
I don't know, I wasn't alive then, I don't know.
All right, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Okay. Do we vote? We just voted yes. Okay, I'll listen, okay. Now, item 19, Milton Community Concerts Proclamation. So this is from Timothy Steele, you have that one too as well?
I do, yeah.
So this is the, how many years? I'm trying to think.
10?
I think my wife did two, two of them, she was in. Oh, here we go. So this is, I'll do this one. So this is, whereas the Milton Community Concerts is celebrating the 10th anniversary season at the historic meeting house at First Parish Unitarian Universalist. And whereas over the past nine years, Milton Community Concerts has enriched the cultural landscape of our community with great musical performances. Through the visionary leadership of Timothy Steele,[1618.88] Through the visionary leadership of Timothy Steele, Milton Community Concerts has produced 33 concerts featuring 344 artists, including Metropolitan Opera performers, TED speakers and Broadway stars. And whereas as a grant recipient, Milton Community Concerts understands the importance of giving back. It has raised $25,669 to support both local and national charitable causes. Milton Community Concerts also collaborates with local artists, local art organizations to promote diversity. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Milton Select Board congratulate Milton Community Concerts on its 10th anniversary season. Prosperity extends appreciation to the dedicated individuals who make the concert series such a great success. Given this day, Tuesday, August 27, 2024. Signed by the Chair on behalf of the Select Board, Richard G. Wells, Chair.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I just want to, having been to several of these and in an ironic, not that I tell personal stories, although I haven't told a big one tonight that I never even talked about. My wife, many years, attended the Law &amp; G School of Music and was under the direction and was a student of a famous baritone by the name of Robert Honeysucker. Robert Honeysucker was born in the South and was the son of my minister and he traveled the world performing before symphonies, including Boston, New York, everywhere. And the last, the last time that they sang together, he died tragically having a heart attack in a car accident. I think that six weeks later, driving to sing the New York Symphony on 95. And the last concert that they did together was here at First Parish, was the two of them. And it was a, I have some great video, it was a great night because he, I just think of, I remember the first day when at Law &amp; G you auditioned and I signed her up for music lessons, which she wanted nothing to do with. And then you go for an audition and he selected her. And I remember going to, at the end of each semester, they have a recital and the students, your test is, you have two songs, you have to, you have to sing them. And I remember going to the first recital and I looked at her and I said, oh boy, she's an overhead. And now some, probably just in probably 500 national anthems later, and not to even mention other things that she's done on this floor. Like she's been across the globe and hence some, just, I give immense gratitude to her. But unbeknownst was that Rob and Tim Steele were friends. And that's how, he saw that Pauline was one of his students and that's how they wound up coming in, small world. So congratulations, music is, you know, Mr. Zol talked about, music is a, is a very important thing in, in human life, but it's really a critical thing and there's so many aspects of this town that exist and this is just one more of them. So this is a good one. Okay, moving right along, we're almost there. Item 20, item 20, discussion approval, meeting minutes for July 23rd, 2024 and August 14th, 2024. There were some, was there an edit? Did I?
They were just basic little typo, kind of minor.
So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes subject to final edit? Okay?
I'm going to ask Lynn, are they, they're all done?
Okay. So I don't even need, I don't even need to do it. Okay, so that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, next one.
I'm just, I'm abstaining just because I haven't read the, I know they came, they, the 23rd ones came through, I think, like an hour ago, an hour before a meeting, so I didn't have a chance to read them.
Okay. And then there's, the next motion is a move to approve the meeting minutes stated August 14th, 2024.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor on that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Town Administrators Report, Mr. Milano.
I just, just wanted to mention that the group working on Wharf Park, which is where the farmer's market is, is having another public meeting or their final public meeting to share the final design on Wednesday, September 4th at 7:00 p.m. here in the Council on Aging. That has been, started to be advertised, so we'll make sure to get that out there. And that's it for me this evening. I'll have more on the 10th of September.
Quick question. I know I got an email from Scott. Do we need to bring them in? Oh, was that the Walk Committee, was that?
September 10th is what we're targeting for that, for them to come to the Select Board.
For a vote?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Scott, if you're watching, I didn't miss it and I, I got, I got, I got. A little busy this week, but I got, I do, I mean, he, he knows where I am, that I, I know how hard they've worked on this. The last meeting we had with the planning board was, I thought was very good. And I don't think people realize how, how much work and how much effort is going into trying to transform that entire piece of property, not just to transform it, to buy it for some of it first. And I just want to thank everyone who's committed to that and I, quoting his committee as well, so. Okay, I have nothing. I'm going to pass future item.
Could I, could I just add?
Sorry, absolutely.
May I add something to the Chair's report?
Sure.
So I just, a couple of quick things. One is just, we haven't met since we had, that there was the event with the ice bucket challenge over. It's been a while, so at the Forbes Museum, so it was really a very nice time. And a lot of teams were there. It was pretty cool to see everybody that came out in the community. So that was a great event. And then also, a few days ago, there was the national night out at the police station and wanted to thank them for another really great event. And then on a third note, I did want to talk about an issue for the Board of Health. If you've been following along, I, I did want to add something in about this. So you've probably seen in the news things about the triple E and the West Nile virus. It's been on, all over the news lately. So a couple of things, and I have another update on it, so I, I'll let you know about that. When I first put my thoughts together for today, it was that we're, we live in Norfolk County and that we're at moderate risk for West Nile and low for triple E. But that has changed, so I'll redo that when I'm going to redo in a minute. August and September are the months when most people are exposed to West Nile virus. And so some of the suggestions are to wear long sleeves, dusk to dawn, mosquito netting on baby carriages, mosquito repellent you should have on, any standing water that you have in your yard, you should try to empty that because those are breeding grounds. But we did just get an alert today, it just came in like right around 5 o'clock, that Mass Department of Public Health has confirmed the third and fourth West Nile virus human cases of the season. And one was in Norfolk County, one was in Suffolk. And due to these detections, Milton has become increased to high risk for West Nile virus. So that just came through. So just want to make sure that, you know, perhaps on our website and when we send some things out on the town feed, that we put something out there about how people can protect themselves as well and let them know that the risk has been raised.
Okay, will do.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can I just put a plug in?
Absolutely.
The, the first, first Friday of the season is Friday, September 6th, 4:00 p.m. at the Manning Community Park of East Milton Deck. Community, Chamber of Commerce and Milton Arts Center are getting together. They've got a bunch of musicians, there's going to be food, artists, artisans. Great, great time, starts at 4:00, ends at dusk. Wear your bug spray and it should, it should be a lot of fun. It's, it's family friendly and it's completely free.
And one more plug?
That was the only one I was going to do, so you got.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I know about it.
Oh, I have one more plug.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And the Milton Public Library has an event on the Thursday, right before that event on the Friday. So the Thursday before, which is right after Labor Day, I think it's 5:30 to 7:30. And they're going to, it's, they're going to have some events there at the library as well, 5:30 to 7:30. I think I covered everything.
You've done my work for me since I was not prepared for it.
I guess I should say, don't forget Tuesday is Election Day.
Yeah, that's important.
And you can early vote.
You can early vote this week.
Yep.
Eight to 5:30, eight thirty to five, eight, eight.
Business hours.
Business hours.
You can still return your mail-in ballot as well up until 8 o'clock on Election Day, really.
So given that, item 26, oh, future agenda items, anything of importance that we need to? I think we're talking about a lot of future stuff tonight. Okay, so I'll jump to 26.
Just anything we want to say into here? I don't know.
Oh, public commerce, sports?
I don't know, I'm outside.
Anyone else? I'm, I'm, go ahead, Mr. Zol.
Thank you. I, I think just to Ms. Rose Maron's comments about the, the questions about scheduling a fall town meeting to make sure that the school building committee continues to be able to be funded to answer the questions that this board might have. I think it's, I'm not, it sounds like there's a couple of items, including the senior tax issue that might be relevant. So hopefully it's not a huge, long town meeting, but it might be a good future discussion because of the.
Talked about it today and Nick's, I haven't talked to Chair Cal yet, but I do intend to talk to her next week. And you've been talking regularly with, with Sean and the superintendent, so. Would, I, I agree with that. I knew that was out there, so we already knew that was there.
Yeah, just wanted to find it.
She's just reiterating what we already knew, so. Okay, so.
I have a comment.
Oh, sure, go ahead. What do you want, where's, where's this under? Where were you on the future item agenda?
No, I'm responding to a public speak. To members of this board, town staff, to my fellow citizens, it is with much thought about our schools and our town that I speak to you tonight. I am a fresh perspective and that is what I was elected to bring to this board. A lot of work and many years have gone into the solution and I realize my coming at the 11th hour and questioning it will not be received warmly by many. I agree, we have a school crowding issue. To what degree is the question? As I have said, a lot of work and many years have gone into this solution. But from what I've heard, 173.4 million was a new factor demanded rethinking. I'm talking about this figure at our last meeting. My colleague described the amount by stating, it shocks me. And further went on to say, this is the most significant financial decision any board has ever made on behalf of this town. So I took it upon myself to do some investigating. I began looking at the SBC presentation of 12/219 and from that I tallied up the classroom shown in that report for Cunningham, Colley, Hart, Glover and Tucker. And I found the current school population, PK through 5 from Nezdek and the student per classroom count I arrived at from this was 20. Crude and simple and not the whole picture. So I reached out to Cindy and Megan and asked them if they would do some research to me. And this is what prompted their report, which they sent to me today, which she talked about tonight, which I can send to you all. I've not had a chance to completely review it, it's 88 pages. But I would like to schedule a meeting with the superintendent to present it and allow him to come back with data that challenges or confirms the data in the report. As you will see in the report, one of the items being asked was for a pause for a month to let us confirm or deny. And I would like to report back to this board on September 24th meeting with the results of our work.
Can I ask a quick, just a quick question? You allude to Cindy and Megan. Can you identify, it's Cindy, I'm assuming it's Dr. Christen, which Megan?
Megan Walsh.
Okay, thank you.
So you're going to do this on your own? You want to take this and meet with the superintendent and discuss it with him?
I, I, yeah, I would like to, I would like to try to verify the, the data.
You want to try and make that happen for him so he can?
Yeah, I'm happy to coordinate that, that's, that's fine. No problem.
Okay, anything else? Good?
Yep.
Okay, good? All right, so.
Chair, just before you go into 26, we won't be in a position to return to open session. So the Select Board can just, if the Select would go into executive session and then can adjourn from executive session, will not have to return to open session.
Okay.
Okay. So move to enter, I'm using you. I move to enter into executive session. Consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property located at Jill Kathleen Lane based on my belief that discussion on this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. Select Board will re, no, the Select Board will adjourn from open session and will not return to open session from executive session.
I'll second.
All those in favor?